They called the meeting on the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you so much. I don't see anyone. Mr. Moser, it seems like we're going to ask you kind certainly believe this in our invocation and our pledge. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Let's all pray. Gracious and God, Father, we thank you for your benevolent blessings, that you've been gracious upon us. We ask that you would bless this august body, Father God, with the insight and the wisdom to transact the business of the community. We pray you continue to be with us and strengthen us. We pray for our soldiers who are fighting both abroad and various countries. We pray that you be with them and strengthen them. This one, thank you for the powerful and penetrating name by Lord and Savior Jesus the Christ. And everybody said, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Got it, Eddie. All right, this is a great day in the life of the county. We have with us some very special young people who accompanied by their parents are those who support them. We're going to call Mr. Raymond Gross to the front if he will lead us through this awards ceremony. I remember after the, I guess it went before that time, but most recent years after the Liberty County High Team won, they said, "We are a county of champions." So, we are a county of champions. Historically, it goes back further than that, but did they recognize these young people for their accomplishments? So, Mr. Gross, if you could lead us through that.
Good evening Chairman Lovett and Commissioners. I'm here to introduce the six state champions that we have. We traveled to Augusta, Georgia on May 5th and 6th. We had six young people to come back with state championships. All of them were in field events, but they represented Liberty County at their best and did a good job and brought home six state titles. So, I'd like to introduce those individually to be recognized by the board. And we will go from there.
All right, board, let's go down and we'll receive them as they come across. Now, someone's going to assist us with the, you are Mr. Brown? All right, certificate. Board, let's go down. Make it like graduation.
I know a couple of them said they might be a few minutes late, but we'll go ahead and... All right, the first state champion in the standing long jump was Caden Miller. He, his parents are Chris and Dorothy Hope. He is a four-sport athlete here in Liberty County. He plays basketball, football, baseball, and he runs track. And track was the event that he got his, earned his state title in. He is from Midway, Georgia. Caden, Ms. Hope, can you come on up and accept? He said he was going to be here about five minutes after. Yes, ma'am. The second state champion is Jalen McCall in the softball throw. Although Caden was the champion in the standing long jump. Jalen McCall, softball throw. She, her parents are Jessica McCall and Malik McCall. She is a three-sport athlete in Liberty County, basketball, softball, and track. And she is from Heinzville, Georgia.
Just going back, I want to give up, give some son a hand too.
Our third state champion in the high jump is Ms. Jabria Jackson. Jabria, parents, her parent is Jalisa Jackson. She's a three-sport athlete, basketball, soccer, and track. And she's from Heinzville, Georgia. Our fourth state champion, Breon Richardson. She excelled at the high jump. Her parents? He? Oh, wrote that wrong. I wrote that wrong. I got it wrong. He, the parents are LaShawn Richardson and Cedra. Is it Cedra? Cirilla? All right, and he is a three-sport athlete, basketball, football, and track. And his hometown is Heinzville, Georgia.
Keep your eyes on him. Keep your eyes on him.
Our fifth athlete, Josiah Triplet. His parents is Ms. Latrell Bacon and Ken Richardson. He is a four-star athlete, basketball, football, baseball, and track. And his hometown is Heinzville, Georgia. And the sixth athlete is Chemistry Sab. Her parents is Demetra Neal and Gabriel Neal. And she is a one-sport athlete, and that's track, which she excelled in to become a state champion. Her hometown is Heinzville, Georgia. And I'd like to let everyone know that we just finished qualifying the district. Well, first, let's give all athletes the state champs a hand. I'd like to let the Board of Commissioners know that we have two teams advancing to the state playoffs this week. There's 12 you boys qualified for state playoffs, and they'll begin Statesboro on the 20th. And the 17 you senior girls have qualified, and they'll be in Wayne County at 6:00 PM on the 20th as well. Softball and baseball.
Bring them back for this too.
We gonna try. We gonna try. Thank y'all.
One, two, three. Liberty County proud. One, two, three. Liberty County proud.
I had a late thought today. We may try to maybe Zoom Tremell Waltz now and, you know, Tremell of course played for the Georgia Bulldogs from Riceboro. So, we may try to Zoom him in sometime. I know he's got a busy schedule, but at one of the meetings, we can at least recognize him, let him say hello to us through Zoom.
All right. And Miss Samantha, can you beat that?
I'll try. Not as exciting as sports, but...
Good job with the PowerPoints, we did the PowerPoint too. I saw that. I saw that.
Thank you. Good evening. You received a detailed overview at the last board meeting of the 2024 proposed budget. We had a public hearing on June 6th that we are required to have under state law. Tonight, I will highlight just a few of the items that were discussed. The first slide shows a comparative review of the 2023 budget as compared to our proposed 2024 budget. The 2024 budget, if adopted, will go into effect on July 1st. And it totals a little over 57.7 million. This is an increase of 16%. The next slide shows the 2024 additional personnel and benefits as were reviewed and recommended by you all, the board, and the members of the Budget Workshop Committee. This was all part of the budget presentation that I made during the last meeting. So, I won't delve into the details unless you, unless you would like for me to. One thing to note is the 2024 budget does not include any capital items to be covered by the general fund. We were able to find additional funding sources through the ARPA grant and SPOLOST 6 and 7 to cover many of the urgent and necessary needs. Additionally, we had some savings in our FY '23 budget that was able to cover some of those requests as well. And we are currently moving forward with funding those before we get to year end. The last two slides of my presentation from last time basically depicted some of the challenges we faced in the 2024 budget as well as some considerations that we make when adopting the budget. These are things that we will continue to do as part of our budgeting process. A couple of things I would like to point out with the 2024 budget is that this budget supports the continued commitment that you all have made to stand up the fire department within the county as well as to take on and expand the capacity and manpower of our EMS department. We have a Miller Park Fire Station opening very soon. And I drive by this on my way to work every day. And it's really amazing to watch this project come together. We also have the new EMS facility that will be opening soon as well. This is a result of all your hard work and dedication for the public safety of the citizens of the county. And it's very commendable. The other item I want to point out is your dedication to your employees. The proposed 2024 budget includes the implementation of a salary study that will bring the full-time employees of the county to market value. As you know, the job market is very competitive these days. But you all have made the effort to attract and retain the employees. Additionally, with our fiscal year beginning in July and ending in June, it's often difficult to predict exactly where our largest revenue source of property taxes will come in. The digest is being prepared right now and should be finalized sometime in late July or August. But our budgeting process requires us to propose a budget to implement July 1st without really knowing what the digest will bring. But once we have this information, we can further review the 2024 budget and make any changes as we see necessary. I say all of this to say that most of the personnel requests that were on the sheet of the additional personnel for 2024 have a starting date of January 1st and not July 1st. We were, we've been very cautious to make sure that we get a complete picture of what our revenues are going to look like before we get in over our heads, so to speak. But I just want to make sure that the public is aware that the effort the commission makes to ensure that our revenues achieve the funding that's required to support our budget. Short and sweet, but I believe that sums it all up, unless you have any specific questions. Short and sweet, but I believe that sums it all up, unless you have any specific questions.
Now, Mr. Brown, this is not a public hearing.
It is not.
It's just adoption. Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Richardson?
Chair. Don't have a question, just a comment. One may be an informal question. For everyone out here, Ms. Samantha, the salary study will benefit all of the county employees.
All of the full-time employees.
The full-time employees. And like we said before, Mr. Chairman, we're hoping that this will help us to maintain employees and make their livelihood a little bit more better. But we know it's not easy. But we did struggle to get where we at.
Yes, sir.
So we hope that they will stay.
Right.
The salary study implementation, 1.5, is that about a mill?
Probably a little over one mil is my, is my guess at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question concerning, and I know we worked diligently in this budget, but I was just concerned, you know, it's an increase of 16%, which we know why in some areas. But also, you were using some from, from ARPA. So I'm just, I'm just thinking, if we wouldn't have had ARPA, how much this budget would have increased? I think sometimes we've got to curtail some of our spending.
Yes. I definitely agree.
Assessments went out today and calls started coming in. And I just, I, I just don't know how, or if you have a percentage of how much we're going to use out of ARPA. ARPA, but, and then we don't have, that's just for capital.
Just for one time. Mm-hmm. Correct. It was approximately like 400,000. I thought I had a sheet on that.
So that's maybe a half a mil.
Mm-hmm.
Right at it.
Mm-hmm.
But a lot of folks, well, I know I, I received mine, but the assessments are out. And they have increased. Property values have increased. And obviously, that means your, your property taxes is going to increase.
Mr. Brown and I had a rarity on yesterday where a local citizen said they were wondering why the increase hadn't happened before now. We almost fainted.
Well, that could be true because it depends on what type of property you own.
Yeah.
Whether it's commercial.
This is residential.
Home, residential, you know, or small acreage. I don't, I'm not sure how they, but I know they do that every so many years that they, 10 acres or less, or five acres or less. But most of the residential have increased.
You know what? I guess.
That I've heard from.
This is a good time, as any. The spiel you gave yesterday on, on the whole appraisal protocol, do that again for us, if you will, for our listening audience.
This real quickly. So every year, the Board of Assessors is reviewed by Department of Revenue for sales ratio studies. And so the state's going to take comparative sales data and average it. And our assessment values have to fall between 38 and 42%. Or their assessment values, between 38 and 42% of that state ratio, or the county suffers a penalty, a fine, actually. Because, as you know, the state gets a portion of taxes. And so, but in essence, they have been shorted funds. And so they penalize, they put a poor parcel penalty on the county. We've had that happen one time before. We actually had it in the, in a sector of property classification this past year. You might remember Board of Assessors, and Ms. Roberts came to you over that. So that's how that happens, basically. And, and the, and the Board of Assessors always try to be at the, it's close to 38% and not on the high side as they can be. And so, but you got to be careful because if you, if you fall below that 38, you get a penalty by the state.
And she told me as recently as last week, even though current assessment rate is right on the line. Right on the line, trying to hold it down for.
Well, with that being said too, once we get the digest back with the increase of, of home value or residential value, I'm hoping that we do not have to increase the millage.
We all are. We all are. Has to go through that whole process of giving the appeals and all that, so.
Yes, before they get the final, that's good.
Yes.
But we all looking for that to help us out. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know we, George just made a comment there that we, you know, and we seem to do this sometimes as, you know, we find money to fix something all of a sudden. And we're talking about ARPA money. I'm also one that's had people call about this. They got their assessment on Friday that, that went out. And I looked at mine, but the budget is extremely out of line. The, the people that's looking on TV or Facebook Live, whatever, and you're talking about a 16%. And the cost of living is not going up. And we've seen the governor send money back. We've seen the federal government send money back to try to help folks. And Samantha, you did a wonderful job. I don't mind telling you. I've, I got a lot out of it, but there's some things that I got of it that, that is very crystal clear, and that means that the taxes is going to go up. And I can't support it. I am 100% for keeping our employees above the threshold, as high as we can keep them. And that's the money that I want to keep. But other than that, I think we're going to have to do whatever we can to survive, to keep our head above water. You talked the other day at our last meeting about seven months of fund balance.
Yes, sir.
I don't have seven months of fund balance in my checking account. If I did, I'd be great the rest of the year. So I'm not, I'm not real pleased on it, Mr. Chairman. And I will support it with a 1% or 1.8% millage. And that ought to cover this study and get the employees back where they need to be. And, and that's the end of it. But I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Samantha took the careful time to, and we knew it was coming, to explain the items that caused the 16, 70, 70% increase. None of us saw the insurance premium coming. We didn't, we didn't see that coming. We knew the salary study was coming, and we knew we were trying to stand up the fire department. We knew that. So those things are known. And I'm trying to recall, even when, based on the submissions from the different constitutional officers and departments, we, how much did we cut? We cut?
Our original budget came in around 67 million. So we've cut it down 10 million.
Yeah. So we did, we, we whittled and we whittled.
We did sharpen them out.
Yeah.
I'm like, did we whittle or did we cut?
Yeah. And, and some things, in fact, I was hearing about, who was it? A local government. I've forgotten who it was. And they said too, you got to factor in some inflation because everything's going up. So you got to factor in some for that. So I think, and right, we all praying that the digest will, will help us out, so. But this is the, this is the best we had to offer at this time.
That's correct.
And we'll work through the process and, and see what happens. I'm pleased with the resilience of this commission. I'm pleased with the efforts on, on everybody's behalf to, to make these adjustments when necessary. But right now, this is, this is where we are. I, I, you know, why should I build a brand-new fire station and not staff it with people to operate the fire station? We knew that was coming. The salary study, we knew that was coming. Also, the EMS station. Once again, we didn't know the help was coming. But we have to have it. We have to have it.
Yes.
Worst thing we can do is have a catastrophe and not have insurance coverage to cover, you know, our building. So, so we have to work with that. So we're all hoping for the best. We're hoping for the best.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I, I too would like for us to maybe take another look at it. I think last, when we met last week, I did thank the committee that, you know, that worked on the financing. And I know everyone did, did a great job, you know. But when you, when you put it on paper and you put it up on the screen, and it's a $16 million increase, and some of the assessments did go out on Friday. And I got calls from people in my district. My district lines moved somewhat. I don't have anything on the other side of the railroad track anymore. But I, I got a lot in Hinesville and Waltowville. And I've received calls from people in my district and people in, in other districts. And, you know, there is a concern. I've been on the phone and sending emails with, with Ms. Roberts, you know, and the things that, that her office has to do that's mandated by the state. All of, all of that has to be taken into consideration. As Mr. Brown said, you know, we won't, don't want to subject ourselves to any kind of fines or penalties, you know. So we, we have to do that. That's, that's law. But, you know, you, you use this, the old adage that, you know, can you live tomorrow the way you live in today? And, you know, some of these things, these additions, we don't have today. And we're budgeting for them tomorrow. And that, with that budget for tomorrow, comes this increase. And 16% is a lot. And again, with all the hard work that everyone did in my absence most of the time because I, I wasn't able to make the meetings. But it's, it's, it's pretty high. And, you know, I just wish that we can, you know, do something. You're right, Mr. Chairman. We, we do have a county-wide fire plan, for example, and we do want to.
EMS.
Staff these. And then we, you know, EMS and all of these other emergency services. And I, and I fully understand that. But, you know, we, we, we need to do what we can to try to hold the line as best we can. Now, I, I think when we were meeting down there, when we were separated because of COVID, I'd said that if we don't do nothing, let's take every one of our hard-working county employees who have to live. And let's make sure that we take care of them. Let's do that first. And anything else would be icing on the cake, or gravy on top of the mashed potatoes or what have you. And we've done that. We did a salary study because we do want to take care of the guys at the road department and all the other employees that, that work so hard for this county. The ones that worked hard through the pandemic, you know, that, that were essential workers that no one called out because of COVID. I mean, you know, they, they, they were there every day, and, and we weathered that storm for the most part. And we do have to take care of those. And that's why I was excited about the salary study because we do need to do everything we can because the competition in Liberty County is going to be real fierce in the coming years with the industry that's coming here. Manufacturing, automobile manufacturing. And, you know, they, they're going to pay a lot more money than we can with our employees. But we have hard-working employees, and we do need to take care of them. So I, I would like for us to continue to do that and everything else. If we don't have it today, you know, let's do what we can to try to hold off on it, if, if we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had one more. Because I thought, you know, and I worked on the, with, on the finance committee with the budget and all. But Samantha, you said a couple of things there that I want clarification on. You said, if I heard you correctly, if we approve the budget, we could go back in. And you can't change it after it's approved. Did I hear her wrong? Or, or we?
Well, we'll.
Got a couple of questions, but that's one.
Okay. So for those divisions that aren't constitutional in nature.
That are not?
That are non-constitutional in nature, you could go back and amend that budget. That's correct. For anything that's not been implemented yet.
Okay. And the other one is, if I look, and that's next, is the monthly report, finance report.
Yes, ma'am.
And last year's budget, am I correct, was 48, about 48 thou, 48 million?
49.
Almost 49. Right. So if I just add the 49 plus the additional personnel and benefits, it's only like 52 million versus 57. And I know I worked on, on the finance and was in finance. So there's like 5 million that we are improving, that we are.
Increasing.
Approving above last year's budget. Not just, I would say, special items, the personnel, the benefits. So I may need to go back and look at the budget and see. And I know we tried and tried, and we sharpened pencils and we shaved off, but there's 5 million above.
Right, right, right. If you, if you look.
And that's going to be quite a bit.
So she's, so the personnel sheet that she shows is, it's got the salary in there. Of course, it doesn't have the insurance in there.
Right.
Which is another million and a half. It also does not have the, what I'll call the second-half funding that was only funded halfway by the current budget. So there were a lot of positions, some of those in fire, and some others, that were approved last year, just like we're doing this year for half a year funding. Now, the new budget has to pick those up at a full-year rate.
It was about 500,000 of those.
So, so about 500,000 of that. That's about 2 million that adds up. The top of my head, you know, some of that's obviously going to be, from what I remember going through line item by line item like y'all did, was gasoline, electricity.
ADP.
ADP. So we're pulling that back out now to be covered by ARPA for one more year because it's a qualifying expense under ARPA. And I, and we can look at what the others were.
Because eventually, that's going to have to come back online if we're going to keep.
Yes.
Oh, that's great. It will. It will.
But some of that can be covered over fund balance. It's just in now.
Well, fund balance really should only be used for non-recurring items, which is what we've been using it for, which is capital asset purchases.
But there's seven, how many months? Seven and a half, eight months. So any way you look at it, it's money that.
Right.
It's worth money to the good. And we can do one of two things. We can work like a household work, or we can pile a bunch of money up.
So ideally, uncom, and to get too deep in it, but uncomparative of the household, normally, your income's coming in 12 months of the year. Our income, big income, as Samantha mentioned last time, is coming in from like December to February when tax bills are being paid. And so then you start to get into lean months, which are the months of September, October, November, December, first part of December, when there's no income or very little income coming in. That's when that balance has to carry you. And that's the reason the recommendation from Finance Officer Association, ACCG, is you have between three and seven months. So while it may be running at seven months right now, we're, we're in the, in the cash period. Last year, when we got into those lean months, we got down to less than three months of fund balance. So what you don't want to do is let that thing drop. So then in those last couple of months of the year, you have to go borrow funds to operate. So it's not really, you know, sometimes I hear people refer to it as a savings account, and I cringe. It's a cash flow account. And cash goes in, but it also comes back out with all the funds. And so, yeah, that's, you know, seven months is good right now.
Yep.
But when you look at the fund balance again, without having any surplus added to it, it'll be back down to about two months, two to three months in that October, November time period again.
Well, you know, it goes back to what you said at the beginning was, you know, you, the budget has control, or you have control over our employees and the spending. But non, the constitutional officers, if they're approved, then they're going, they'll spend that amount. Or they can. I mean, a lot of them has, looking at the finance report, a lot of them has, you know, they're, not too many of them that are running over right now. So, and they normally have an excess, normally.
Once you appropriate those funds to those constitutional divisions, you cannot go back and withdraw those funds.
That's right.
But it's not appropriated yet.
It'll be appropriated tonight.
If we approve the budget.
If y'all, if y'all approve the budget tonight.
I'd like to go back in there and look again. I see where you're saying it's coming from, but there's still quite millions out there.
We can run, we can, we'll run a report. We can run a comparison report that shows last year's budget by line item compared to this year so you can see exactly. so you can see exactly where those increases were that y'all looked at.
I'd like to look at that before I approve the budget myself, even though I was on finance and I.
Well, the problem is if you don't approve the budget tonight, then you're going to go into default. You have to have a new budget on the table by July first.
Well, if it goes into default, what does that mean? They're running out of.
Oh, meeting and vote on it, okay.
Uh legally, you've got to have a budget adopted before June that has to be out to the departments for operation.
Before July first.
July first, that's correct.
You might can run that report tomorrow.
Well, she can, then you'd need to schedule another call meeting.
I don't know.
You have to give a
That's just my opinion.
Well, you you have to give a week's, by law, you have to give a week's notice before you have a budget adoption. So uh that notice would have had to run this week for your next call meeting, because the organ only runs, legal organ only run once, you know, once a week.
Well, if if we do all that, if we do all, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. If we do all that, what's the earliest we could um that we would have to advertise for another uh budget meeting?
You don't, you don't have time to advertise for another budget meeting and have it run in the paper a week prior to adoption before July first.
But it is the thirteenth, so next Tuesday is the twentieth.
So it would need to, it would need to run next Thursday or next Wednesday. And then the earliest you could have a meeting would be the following Wednesday.
But we can't keep the budget exactly the way it is right now.
You could make a motion to adopt uh adopt the continuing budget and not do anything different. The problem is, you're going to have departments that run over inside of those thirty days. So you could go back, never been done before, but you could go back and adopt the current budget to continue at same department levels effective July first.
And the seven months.
And continue a mu- well, you.
Seven months of fund balance. Use that to, I mean, it's in there and it's from last year, so it'll need to be.
I wouldn't recommend that. That's, I wouldn't recommend using one-time money in the bank to fund continuing operations. That's how, that's how we got in trouble before. We borrowed, we spent down the fund balance and we had to go borrow money to operate.
When we came on.
Where, if it's, if it's that much, and we need to stay exactly where we're at, folks. I mean, there's too many questions about six million dollars that um we need to uh and Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. I don't mind making it if you entertain a motion.
I I want to remind us that um through the budgeting process, we did go through with the fine tooth comb over and over and over.
At least three or four times.
Yeah, and and one of the things that come out of it, you were able to find some uh item that could be funded with ARPA, so that helped us some. But prior to that, we had gone through it over and over. Every every last department, and I remember even some of the the departments that presented, there were very little increases in what they even presented. Some were pretty much the same as last year's budget, so I'm not sure.
I I don't know where the other three million is at.
What we'll, what we'll find.
I mean, uh, Mr. Chairman, and I concur with what you said. We went by some department, line item by line item. And if they had money that was not usable, that was not used in the last couple of years, and they were still asking for the same amount, we kind of like took that away from some of them. We spent a whole bunch of day, a bunch of days and time up here, cutting, 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 you know.
Yeah, I was probably, yeah. I know exactly what's.
And those cuts have been, as I said, to the bone.
You got folks over there who have opened up their mail that see their assessment, and they're going, wondering what's going to happen next year.
Excuse, I'm sorry. We we tried to be proactive and remember when Ms. Glenda came to give us fair warning about the assessments, we said, man, let's get that word out to the general public.
Yeah.
In fact, I know she made it around to a few of the cities to explain it at their meetings. I'm not sure how many she made. In fact, I asked the mayors, please invite her to come to your your city meetings to explain the the process and what's going to happen. So we tried to be proactive with that, you know. I know we discuss openly here at this meeting, so. And and I do wish, when I saw the tax bills, I forgot what the the wording they used, but to me, it could have been a little more clearer what they, what she was trying to say, you know. Because the average person, I forgot what the words were on there. Something adjustment she had on the tax bill. But I I wish it could have been a little more verbiage on there to explain to to those who were not aware what was going to happen, but but.
So you you'll have your digest, um like Samantha mentioned, in July. So the other, you know, I was not trying to, we've never been in this position before, so a little bit out of words. But if if um you you'll have the digest back that if you, other than the caveat with constitutional provisions, if you wanted to go back and adjust that budget, you could, based on the digest information.
And you've got reassessed growth.
We have reassessed growth and we'll have real growth, that's great.
I I mean, it's a, it's something we need to look at, Joy, before we.
Well, no, you won't be able.
Because we know what will happen to this money.
It's going to be spent completely.
And next year, we're going to be sitting there the same thing. I mean, we got two constitution officers back, and they understand it as much as anybody, that if you get in a jam like this, you got to hold back, you got to push back. And uh of course, I don't see any more in here, but I mean, Jeff is the department head, but they understand um as much as anybody. It's not their first one, but we got to try to do what we can to satisfy our needs that's out here and then the wants, we'll try to make them work. But if we can't, we can't.
I I I don't know, if you'll excuse us, maybe we can step out while y'all continue on and talk about options. But one of those is, because you did implement certain things in January, you cannot, you could, you could reduce people's pay and go backwards uh to January first. But um I wouldn't recommend that. If you we don't have the number that's associated with the daily operational run right now in a budget format for you. If you wanted to try to adopt that and leave things as is right now without reducing pay of employees, you could, I mean, certainly do that. But again, uh the earliest you could have a meeting would be the twenty-eighth of June, if we had a number that could run, but problem is, we weren't prepared for this, I apologize. We we would have to have an ad to the paper tomorrow, which we can't do. The earliest I'd add, yeah, I don't, there's no way you can do it before June thirtieth and meet the legal requirements.
All right. I I remind the commission, we use the same process. We may have had a few more times to look at it and review it uh than before, so there's nothing we did out of normal. Once again, the outliers are
Yes.
And the and the fire department. And of course EMS and the salary study, those are outliers.
Yep, there's total four point nine million by themselves.
Yeah, yeah. And those are things that I know as a commission we support.
But if you add that, if you just add that five million to the forty-nine million that we currently have budgeted, you're three point six, give or take, over. I I'm trying to figure out where that came from.
Why don't we do this, if I could, if it's, if if y'all allow us to.
I can go run it.
That's what I'm thinking, is let's just pass on this item, let her run those differences for y'all to look at.
I can't remember where it was, and I don't have my budget book.
Yeah, I can do that.
You want to do that?
We can run the differences.
Okay.
When will we come back, Joy?
Tonight.
Tonight, she's going to come back, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank y'all.
Had an engagement, may have have him late already. I I was, I I neglected to ask you if you would entertain um Joey going through the um the SRO agreement, can I move the item um six one up, please, sir? The the SRO agreement.
Uh yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I believe, I believe y'all have a draft of that, I won't speak for it. The motion for simple, Kelly may want to speak for it.
We need to make a a motion to change, I I don't think so.
Since I don't know whether it's the sheriff or chief or somebody wants to comment on it, they've had, they've had some meetings with the Board of Education.
Yeah, I lost the chief, yeah.
And I know Mr. Davis is also doing a review on it. There's a couple of things I know that he's going to recommend a change in there.
All right. Change, I thought it was good.
No.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Council Board members, um we finally got an agreement with the um Board of Education. Their chief just took off over there now to uh get them to finalize, and they can go ahead and sign off on it for our agreement with the Board of Education, especially with the uh SRO program. Everything we do with the SRO program is designated and designed to support this county and take care of our kids. We're not doing anything that's uh that's not uh above board, because that's something that uh I do not do and will not do. As you can see, that um everybody has come to agreement, so depending on your questions.
What what was the total amount, Sheriff? How many SRO officers were you going to put in them?
Seven.
Seven?
Yes.
And the high schools or?
Schools and three middle schools.
Yes, three middle schools.
Yes, we have the one from the high, from the middle school going back and forth to the elementary school, just to check on them. Still out of our budget for the sheriff office, we're taking care of Liberty Elementary, because that is one of our county schools. So I still took a deputy off the road just to make sure that we get that school covered. It's going to be a little difficult first, but as the program continues to grow, uh the idea is to have one SRO in every school. By the time um the budget happens to get right, then we can uh continue to move on with the program, but as.
They paying for that? The Board of Education is paying for the SRO officers?
Yes.
All, all one hundred percent?
All of them, except for one. And that's the one that we taking, mm-hmm. Except for Liberty Elementary. That's Liberty Elementary.
And that's the one you took off the road and put at Liberty?
Yes, yes. And I felt that that was necessary, because that school is out there by itself. And it's hard to get down to it. And if you have a SRO at the middle school, by the time he get down to the elementary school, depending on where he's at inside the middle school, um
Something bad could.
A lot more things could happen. So we're trying to make sure that that we don't, we want to deter everybody that comes to our school system. So if they see that car parked out front, hopefully that'll deter them to go somewhere else. Or even change their mind and not even go anywhere else and not even do what they want to do.
Sheriff.
Yes.
Uh so it's, it, everything is going to follow as outlined on page two of four. Liberty County, security at Liberty County High School, Bradwell Institute, Midway Mill, Snelson Golan, uh Louis Frazier. Yeah, Louis Frazier Middle School, that's where.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
And the alternative school have their own contract, so we have somebody at that school as well.
Okay, all right, okay. What, I mean.
But they're paying one hundred percent?
Yes.
For?
Everybody but Liberty Elementary.
Okay.
I wanted to ask a question that we we've drawn it up in here before, but the Head Start in Riceboro, how many people do you have there?
None, none. It's not a county school system.
That'll be up to Riceboro to help you with that?
Yes, sir.
Actually, that would be up the coast of Georgia, coast of Georgia.
It's not part of the school system.
Not a, not a part of the school system at all, coast of Georgia.
They don't, there's still schoolchildren in there, aren't they?
They are. Yes.
Yeah, but that would be coast of Georgia strictly.
Private agency.
Yes.
State agency. But but if that's something uh we can get back with them, uh we'd be more than happy to try to help them out. I've been out there several times and um they got a pretty good uh
Security system.
Security system out there in place. But there's, like you said, there's nothing better than to see a police car out front to deter someone from coming up trying to act uh out of control.
I can bring that up at our next coast of Georgia meeting for a discussion, you know, Sheriff.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Sheriff, I'd um I think in one of the meetings when Chief Hagan came, I'd mentioned the um the um the likelihood of something getting out of line at the pre-k center, right over there behind the board office.
Right.
You you know, I was just, I think the example I used was um, you know, a young, young guy in his twenties, you know, that hadn't been able to see his child, you know, because of some domestic dispute.
Right.
And he goes to the pre-k center and, you know, get out of line a little bit. And but we wouldn't have officer there, but we do have them in the, in the middle schools is what, twelve, thirteen-year-old kids for the most part, and then high school is above that all the way up to eighteen or nineteen. But you you know, the the young kids, which is part of the school system, that's not coast of Georgia, that's, that's the Liberty County school system.
Right.
And they um, you know, we are not putting anyone that was that, the the choice of the of the school board.
Yes, not us. Um we're here to put people wherever they need us to put them at. So I can bring that up with the the school board to see if that's something they want to implement this year, upcoming year, to make a change. If if not, then uh we'll see what we can do to try to help them out.
Okay, and one other question, yeah, if if you would uh approach that with um the school board, you know, um Chairman Jones and maybe Dr. Perry and the board members. I I just think it's something that um that that we do need to consider, you know, whether they can fund it this year or not. And um and this SRO program, would that include sporting events like the?
Yes, we will travel back and forth with them when they going on the road.
And all all of that is part of this disagreement?
Yes.
And Bradwell playing Liberty at the Don Edgewood Stadium? The officers, um would it be the same officers or it would be the sheriff department that would be controlling the game?
It'd be the sheriff department will be at both events, but we will have some uh Heinzville PD officer assisting.
Okay, in 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 Heinzville, but.
Yeah, in Heinzville, but not out in uh at Liberty, correct.
And and the crossing guards, is that included in here, you know, where where the?
The crossing guards for the school system here in Heinzville, they'll still be the same ones, because they still have, they are being paid from this city, so they'll still be there.
Will still have their crossing guards at uh at, I guess, um Louis Frazier and Frank Long.
Correct.
And Bradwell and. Yeah, yeah, well, uh Button Gwinnett, over there off of what Jones steward.
Yes, mm-hmm, they'll still be there.
Okay, so that Heinzville would still do that?
Right, correct.
Okay. And the, well, I think the school board pays for that too, don't they?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, do you have a part to add to this, something?
Yes, sir, I just, after reading the agreement, just uh some foreplay language, I'd recommend adding the protection of both the Board of Education and the sheriff's office.
Okay.
Uh you know, for example, that uh the obligations of the sheriff and the contract doesn't expand their civil liability at all. Just stuff, boring stuff, that only I'd be interested in.
Okay.
But I just recommend that you approve it, subject to whatever changes you might approve, based on my recommendations.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Worth your change, is that, Jim? Did you give, did we give them?
No.
Have you made yet, but if you'd like to review it with me, I will sit down with you and you're on. But only about three, fifteen.
Okay.
Not very interesting stuff.
All right.
Sheriff, entertain a motion.
Sheriff, I make a motion that we allow the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, sheriff office, and Liberty County Board of Education to enter an agreement for SROs for the protection.
Second.
With the added language that our county attorney would add to the contract. Okay, all right. And further discussion?
Just one, uh, Mr. Chairman, so what what we're doing is we are approving this um memorandum of understanding of the the agreement between our sheriff office and our school board. Now, um I guess Chief Hagan went over there right now, and he's discussing this with them. And I mean, we we can approve this draft here, what the changes that Keller's going to make. And if if um Chief Hagan is over there right now, um hopefully he's not getting beat up. But if he's over there right now and and they don't um agree with it, then what happens with this? We have to come back?
No, well, we have already discussed with the superintendent and all the, all the players in the table, so they're just going over what we just did right here today, so it's a formality. This is a formality.
Well, I mean, if the, it's the school board that's, you know, that's funding this thing, if, if they don't have a problem with it, neither do I. But I, I do wish that, you know, that they would consider down the line if they hadn't, it's not in this one, that they would take a look at that on pre-k center because that's.
Well, on my way over there, I make sure I bring that up so we can definitely consider that. That is definitely a safety issue.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, you, you see, you see what I'm talking about.
Yes.
I think it's more, I don't want to use the word crazy, but it's more volatile at that age, I think, than, I mean, you know, a sixteen year old boy is probably going to handle himself.
Right.
But a twenty-two year old that hadn't seen his son because of she got a new boyfriend.
Understand.
He's most subject to get a little.
Violent.
A little violent.
Aggressive, yes.
Right, in the parking lot early in the morning and, you know, so.
Totally agree with you, sir.
Yeah.
This is, and this is what we're looking at, Mr. Chairman, this is for, I mean, the sheriff still tells them what to do during the summer?
Yes.
You're going to still have them in the summer, whatever programs they have, you're going to be in control of that?
That is correct.
But my main thing is you're going to still be their direct supervisor.
Yes, yes.
All in favor, show your hands, please. Move your passes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Mosley, you taking minutes over there?
Yes, sir.
All right, sir. Mr. Rickerson, Unified Development.
Chair.
I'm sorry. Oh, your man's here. You know, I saw him. Mama don't leave, I'm going to bring him up, I'm going to bring him up. Very quickly, come on, Mr.. Hey, we going to let, we going to let him come, come?
There must be two.
Where's the certificate?
We have Caden Miller.
Oh, wait a minute, I got more than one?
Two.
Got two?
You'll let them come on up?
Bring the, is this Philly bench too?
Yes.
Josiah Tripp, that's Caden Miller right there. His father, Mr. Miller, just showed up.
I know him.
His mother was.
Commissioner Jones said Freeman Grove in the house.
Oh, the Philly bench?
If it was running, they'd have been.
Caden was the standing long jump state champion and Josiah was the standing long jump in his age group.
Hold it, yeah, hold it up like he, like he's holding his, I think.
All right, we're going to give them a smile, y'all, on the count of three. We're going to all say Liberty County proud, okay? All right, ready, one, two, three.
Liberty County proud.
Appreciate y'all supporting our athletes, thank you.
Congratulations, everybody.
All right, Jeff.
Good evening, Chairman Lovett, members of the commission. This is the third time I've presented this to you. We presented it back in April for the first time. We had the required state public hearing at your May meeting. And now I'm asking you to consider adopting this tonight to be effective on July the first. We've, we've been presenting this all month and we just got, we just left Flemington, they just adopted it. In addition to that, we've had Heinzville, Allenhurst, Riceboro and Midway have all adopted it. So we'd like to ask you to consider adopting this where this does is repeal and replace your zoning and subdivision ordinance for the county and make it the same, one of the same with all the cities. So it is truly a unified development ordinance and all, you and all of the city will have the same development regulations. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Did you have any, I'm sorry, Sheriff. Did you have any oppositions or questions that any of the other?
We have had some questions, just like we had questions at, at your last meeting, but we've answered all the questions and everybody has been satisfied to this point.
I wanted to ask a question. Would this cover your gateway areas too?
It does, that, that gateway ordinance that you all have and that Midway has and Riceboro is all folded into this and it doesn't change.
It hasn't changed that much.
No, it's not changed at all.
And it still does not have, will not interfere with what's going to be on US eighty-four as far as your center area being, the turning lane will go away and stuff like that?
Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with the, with the highway planning. What this, what the gateway does is give you and the city of Midway and the city of Riceboro, wherever, wherever appropriate, the ability to review site plans and building designs so that, so that it looks appropriate for the gateway.
Okay.
You know, you're making me think, I'm not going to, I guess you get to take a breathing and start on the comprehensive plan.
Right, right.
We may need to at least pencil in what we want to gateway to Gun Branch.
We're going there next week.
To, to look like, you know, as.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, we'll be taking this to gate, to Gun Branch on Monday and then we'll finish up with Walterville the following week.
Okay, as we hear from these developers, the growth, Heinzville is filling up rapidly, so the growth is going to spread out, so we may as well, as we do the comp plan, kind of think about those kind of things so that we're not caught off guard when it comes again and we do it as painlessly and as proactively as possible, so.
I was just wondering about the gateway because I saw, of course, Sheriff just talking about Liberty County High, they got some type of block looking thing out there like it's going to be a fence. And I knew when you first started the gateway, we weren't going to have anything like that on eighty-four. And now I see it stopped, so I guess you went down there and stopped?
No, I don't know why they stopped, it must have been a money reason, it had nothing to do with us. That, that's actually not in the gateway corridor. Your gateway corridor stops in Midway, it goes from, it goes from Midway out beyond Exit seventy-six, but it doesn't come all the way into McIntosh and Flemington.
Well, it needs to.
That, that would be something for y'all to consider if you want to amend the map later on.
That's what I say when we do the comp plan.
Ain't nothing in Midway that you need a gate for.
All right, Mr. Rickerson has been before us and as, as he said, this is an amendable document.
That's right, that's right.
We find reason to, we can do that, so let's, let's join our other municipalities right now, get this started, July first?
July first, yes, sir.
I make a motion, we approve the Unified Development Ordinance.
Second.
Motion that we approve the well worked on research Unified Development Ordinance. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. We have joined the others, who, who's lacking? Who, who's?
We're going, we're going to finish up with Gun Branch next Monday and then Walterville the following Tuesday.
Okay, I know Walter Vittum is waiting for it to come back around again, okay. All right, thank you, sir. All right, we got a final plat, Coastal Oaks Phase One, Ms. Sanchez.
Good evening, commissioners.
Before we get started, do you know what district this is?
Islands Highway here.
We had mentioned that last week that they were.
I think this is Commissioner, well.
Jones.
Islands Highway.
Islands Highway, just past where Dorchester Village Road comes in.
Yeah, y'all should know that.
It's been a while since I've been down that way.
He rusty. Oh, boy. We're being recorded. Ms. Sanchez?
Okay, so this is the final plat for Coastal Oaks Phase One. The developer is Paul Krebs and Goose Creek Engineering has designed this project. It is for five lots for single family dwellings located on Islands Highway. So here, obviously the interchange is here, Islands Highway is here, Dorchester Village Road comes in here for the second time and then this is the property right here on the right side. It's kind of a far view vicinity map. And then just looking a little closer, this is the outline of, of the total property. Not all of this is to be, is being final platted, just a portion of it. So this was originally the Ellers subdivision. Islands Highway, I believe it had twenty some odd lots originally platted. What they, they got as far as putting in a road here and doing some improvements for a well because it was going to be served by Community Water Service, or System. And so the road is still there and these were the original, this is the area of the original plat that's being final platted now, but the lots are going to change. So this original subdivision did, was constructed in 2012 and then things went bust not long after. So this revival of the subdivision does have the following changes. It is creating two green space lots that weren't previously there and it is reconfiguring the well lot. Well lot previously was just a long rectangle, skinny rectangular piece. And then for the remainder of the subdivision, there will be changes made to that as those final plats come in as well. So this is the final plat for Coastal Oaks Phase One. The total area being platted is outlined in red. This is Islands Highway here, headed this way is back to the interstate. And this is the road that was constructed back in 2012. They, the next one shows you the five house lots are in pink and the green space is actually in two lots, but it does surround the well lot, which is in gray. And then we've also added in a landscape easement here, because I don't know if you've driven by and noticed, but the road does kind of split around a couple of nice live oak trees. And so that the county is not responsible for maintaining that island. There will be an HOA that will have a landscape easement, so it will be their responsibility to keep that island looking nice. So dedications to the county will include about one, point one-six miles of new street, which is, already has a name of Ellers Court, and then the stormwater improvements. Each lot will be served by an onsite sewer septic system that has been approved by the Department of Public Health. And also there, the well is already in place for the community water system. The street does need an overlay, it's been sitting there unused for, for eleven years. And so it is going to be, that improvement and will be guaranteed by a letter, is guaranteed, I should say, by a letter of credit, the overlay of thirty-eight thousand dollars. And then they also have submitted a letter of credit for the, actually the letters of escrow, I should say, for the sidewalks and street trees that were required to be put in along the developable lots. We also have a letter of escrow for twenty thousand five hundred dollars for the maintenance of the improvements. And these are just copies of those letters of escrow. And this was before the Planning Commission last month. And at that meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the final plat with standard conditions for Coastal Oaks Phase One. The engineer is also here to answer any questions if you have any.
Commissioner Stevens, this is obviously before the fire station.
Yes.
Is it near the sign where it says, we sell eggs or whatever, I didn't?
Before you get there.
Before you get there.
You know where the lady has the house built up about four feet?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, pretty well right across the road from that almost. That's where that water comes out of that subdivision, come right by it. Go back to what the, go back a couple of slides, about six or seven slides. Oh, go back. Okay, dedication to the county will include eight hundred and sixty linear feet. Can you speak on that and the stormwater improvement?
Commissioners, I'm Adam Wilkinson with Goose Creek. So yes, sir, it's the road that was built back in 2012. Luckily, there hasn't been a lot of traffic on that road, it's actually, it's held up very well, but it's also been aged because it's been so long, so it does need an overlay to make it look nice. We have not overlaid it now because we did want it run if, for the construction of the houses. We wanted to run some trucks with construction and not mess up the new surface and then we wanted to do a nice overlay before we turned it over. The stormwater was existing and is functioning correctly. We checked all the boxes and everything, it's clear sediment and everything appears to be functioning as it should.
Now your stormwater improvement, where is that water going to run off to?
It goes into the wetlands of.
Marshall on the backside?
Yes, sir, goes into the wetlands, it's kind of a deep, I won't call it creep, I think it's actually a manmade ditch through there for the, there's a culvert right past the entrance road to the south and that water travels and it just, it dumps into those wetlands tributary.
Can you use that pointer for us?
The green, yeah.
It comes out, overhears where the outlet structure is and then it discharges to the wetlands, which flows out south to the, to the river.
Not trying to start a fire, but is, is that part of the Devonoff property?
The, it's part of, I believe it's part of that sanctuary, the, I forget what the name of that, the nature area. But I believe the ditch is the county ditch.
We don't have a ditch out there.
That's not, that wasn't made by the county.
No, we don't have a ditch out there.
So it's a ditch that runs along the, the backside, you say?
Uh, I was told by one, at one time, a long time ago, excuse me, that I thought it was manmade, but it is a depression in the wetlands, excuse me, right here and the, the water then eventually makes its way out to the, to the river.
What he, what his leading was, going to make sure that neighbors on the other side won't be inadvertently affected by?
No, sir, it, it should be meeting all the pre and post and any future improvements will also be held to the same standard of meeting the pre and post retention. And the outlet control structure currently functioning.
All right, any other questions? All right. That's your presentation, Ms. Sanchez? Final plat, all right, so we don't need. All right.
Sheriff, we'll go ahead and follow the recommendation of LCPC.
This is Mosley's, that's second.
Second.
Motion second, we approve LCPC recommendation for Coastal Oaks Phase One, final plat. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Long, you coming our way? The Commissioner Frates, he was tied up at a meeting in Savannah, so he takes me a little while ago, so I'm not sure he's going to make it.
I just want to say one thing, Mr. Chairman, before I get, before I'm going there. It is Commissioner Stevens' district down there, but a little concerning the lots, Jeff, and traffic coming into that area and leaving out of there. There won't be a D cell lane, they'll just have to dive in and dive out. I know it is something to look at, but. That's all I got.
All right, sir. Yes, sir. All right, I want to hit a couple of things on my status report, I'd let you know a few things are going on. The contractor is scheduled to have the Gun Branch and Sawdust Convention closed for a day so they can put the asphalt down there. We've got an advertisement in the paper, thought Pat about getting that in there. And we got it on our website, there are a couple of signs out on the gates letting everybody know that we're going to be closed for a day. I think that Clinton is going to leave an open top container out there for just miscellaneous. We got a small area outside the fence that we can do that, just to try to accommodate somebody that may mistakenly come and not know that it's closed. But once they get that done, they should be substantially complete. That should wrap up what we have on that particular project. Now, there will be a little bit of grading, shoulders, grassing and minor stuff like that, but the bulk of the work will be done when they do that. Water system, western Louis Frazier Road, I've been going through shop, drawing a view, trying to get those, those done. The pipes are on order, so right now we're kind of waiting on some materials to show up and then the contractor can get started on that. Water system for west of the railroad, as well as Islands Highway box culvert are out for bid. They'll show up in the paper tomorrow and they both bid on July twentieth. So we should, we have two projects that will be opening up in. So we should, we have two projects that'll be opening up in July. I know Mr. Brown has some stuff for you on Millaport Fire Station a little later on, so I'll skip on that. We're working on Will Cemetery Road, hopefully we'll be able to get that in. I'm not quite where I want to be on it, but I'll try to have that done before I'm, before you mid-month, next month, so we can have that out for bid. We are working on Island's Highway and with Highway seventeen to roundabout. We have the, our sub consultants doing the environmental work and doing the archaeological stuff. So, you know, if you ride by, it doesn't look like anything's really going on, but things really are going on on it. Bill Carter Road, we had the pre-construction conference, that was pretty close. We had a pre-construction conference this afternoon.
Thought your voice changed.
So, um, we had the pre-construction conference for that today. They're noted proceed and their time of contract starts Monday, the nineteenth. They're gonna try, well, they're, the initial schedule is to try to have the full depth reclamation complete and try to do the asphalt the first week in August. It may bounce around the weather, take it to closer to the end of August.
Back up on what you just said now.
The full depth reclamation?
Yeah.
So when we're grinding up the road and getting the road prepared?
Right.
We're gonna try to get that done before August.
Where will that be taken?
It'll all be ground up and just put right in. But the way it does is they just, they put the cement down on top and they just turn, turn it right in.
Okay.
So, I lost my train of thought, I apologize. But, uh, they're trying to get on that, it's same contractors doing Davidson-Sleut Street there in Allenhurst, and they're gonna try to get Davidson-Sleut before they get out to Bill Carter Road. Contracts were executed that order as well. So that's kinda going on in the background, that way you kinda know where we stand on those jobs. The next item that I have on the agenda tonight, if that's okay, it kinda leads right out of my report into it, is the Limerick Road roadway improvements. We got three bids on this job. One from Sykes Brothers, one from Platinum Paving, and another one from APAC Atlantic. The lowest bidder was Sykes Brothers, at six hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents. The next one is Platinum Paving at seven hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Sykes Brothers is the contractor that we had on our Palm Drive and Point South project earlier this year. There's no problem with their quality of work, they do a good job with their work. The problem we had with Palm Drive and the, the Garden Acres area, as well as the Point South, was timeliness. Cause they really didn't start the job until the contract completion date was over. When they finally got there, they did out there, you know, we were kinda behind them the whole time. And they did a good job and we have a good product out there. And based on your guys' guidance, we did hold twenty-six thousand dollars worth of liquidated damages on them, on the last job. So, uh, did a lot of, just kinda thinking about how I would recommend to the commissioners, uh, what to do about Limerick Road. You know, based on their quality of work, I think they're very capable of doing the job. They have assured me that they will do it in a timely fashion this time. And in weighing that, um, it was kinda hard to say, spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra, cause I'm worried these guys aren't gonna do it on time. So, you know, I, I decided to go ahead and send a recommendation letter to you, recommending Sykes Brothers do the job. But i- i- it was a great debate that I made the recommendation. But again, they are very capable of quality and I've been assured that they're gonna do it on time. Now, I'm not here to take any arrows for them or anything like that. I'm, I'm here to present the facts and present my thought process. So, you know, and I want to do what you guys want to do, and I want to represent Liberty County. I'm not here to protect any of these contractors. But I wanna, one, have a good product. And I want it to be a, a good price, and I want it to be timely. And just, we're gonna just have to push them the hardest we can to make it timely. And, you know, um, got both of my inspectors on notice if we do this, um, that, you know, we're gonna be like little gnats calling every day and trying to figure out what we can to get them there and push it along. But anyhow, my recommendation to you is, go ahead and recommend a, award it to Sykes Brothers for six hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents plus a ten percent contingency.
Let's see how the commissioner for that district feels about this presentation. We'll follow his lead.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, um, Trent, I've been in touch with him since day one, I guess. Especially with the bid process and three bids, and I guess it was substantial amount from the lowest to the highest. In wanting to be a good steward of the county's money, our constituents' money, automatically the lowest bid would be the first thing that stands out. But then I listened to you and speaking of Sykes Brothers, but their quality of work and what your opinion of them is, and that's something I take dearly, your opinion on it. I mean, you do this for a living, you know, so anything that you suggest, I'd be willing to follow. Um, if other, any other commissioners y'all have had this done before, maybe not with Sykes Brothers, but having roads paved, um, any questions that need be asked in other than me just worrying about the lowest bidder? And I'll get around to the dates, starting completion, maybe once they get the, some of the questions asked out the way.
I will say this, at one time, years ago, they were one of our premier preferred contractors. They've just gotten so busy that I, and, and some of the owners have cha- well, not the owners have changed, but one of the owners has really gotten into politics and is, you know, focused on the politics and not his business. And so it's kinda, the timeliness is, is what's killing us.
Well, Trent, I've got to say this to you. I hadn't heard you got up there in a long time and put your heart and soul out the way you did this now. Sound like there's some doubts.
Well?
Mr. Chairman, so legally, since it's a straight bid under Georgia procurement law, you're bound to take the low bidder unless the bidder that's low has been previously disqualified as a bidder after a hearing that's required under Georgia law to show cause. So your options tonight are to take the low bidder or reject all bids and go back out again. And then if you so desire, go through that disqualification on this bidder or any other before you do that.
Well, Mr. Jones, if, if I would, I was, I did a quick math, um, calculation here, and it's like the difference between Sykes and Platinum is like a hundred and forty-five thousand. And, um, you know, Trent is just coming out of doing liquidated damages, you know, for them being slow. You know, so, so, so you, you weigh that. Now, Mr. Brown said, you know, by law, you know, so that, that kinda covers everything. But let's, you know, this guy's not gonna stay in business if he just drag a job and we hitting him for liquidated damages. I mean, you know, he, he's not gonna, he ain't got that much work where he can afford to basically do a job for nothing. You, you know, so he'll, I think he'll, I think he'll do what he needs to do. By law, you know, we, we have to go with him. But the difference between, um, the low and the, and the second bid is like a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And, um, we can, if he's bidding six hundred and forty-five and he's losing money every day, you know, then that six hundred and forty-five is not six hundred and forty-five. And, you know, I don't think that he's gonna do that again. And plus with everything that we got going on, um, we, we gonna have a lot of work going on. And if he wanna do business in Liberty County, he, uh, maybe he'll go and send no more. You, you know, and not, not have to, um, you know, bid and then lose money every day because he can't get the job done on time. Now, you know, I, I know he busy, as all these contractors are, but, um, I think that, um, you know, number one, by law, and number two, I just don't think that he's just gonna drag his feet like he did, um, on the other project. If, and if he does, we, we got him with the liquidated damages, so. I know Mr. Jones wanted, wanted his project done and wanted it done in a timely manner. And we don't want him just, you know, running over here and running over there and, and ignoring what, what's on the, what's on his plate. But, um, I just think that, um, number one, again, by law, you know, we don't really have much choice in it. Plus the fact that you gonna stay on it, right Trent?
Okay.
If they throw it out again and start over?
I'm turning, I'm turning my drill sergeant loose on him.
Yeah.
Okay.
He won't gain any time.
Trent, how many, how many projects have you got right now, of course, Commissioner Stevens? You have Bill Carter, it's already bid and awarded to Platinum, right?
Platinum.
I mean, that, that may be a way that we can talk with him, though. You, you mentioned, you know, their history. I mean, I remember when Ellis Wood was the guest, I mean, he was the guy. So, you know, let's, let's look at, you know, you may have to get your drill sergeant to, let's get us about three projects ready and say, bid them all at one time. That may keep a man here instead of him having to run up down the road now. I know out there at Commissioner Thrist's district, they've been, I know how long they've been waiting just to get it, get it done. And, um, it's to where it might've been better to just put concrete to keep from having to sit out there and wait on it. But I, I think that's the answer sometimes, is you can get enough projects together to keep the contractor here in the area and let them work. But, you know, you've got the, the home builders that are asphalt roads and, and subdivisions. Let's, um, I mean, let's try to see if we can't get some. I mean, I, I know I have two that's in the city of Flemington that your counterpart there, Marcus Sacks, working on, but those won't even start to happen until, you know, school's out next year. So, um, you know, we'll, that's all I can say that. If you see something out there that looks like this is close, it's dirt. It may have crushed asphalt, it may have lime rock on it. And we can get it done in a timely manner, let's spend the sales tax. If that commissioner's out of money, then try to help, you know, and maybe they'll reciprocate, so.
I understand.
I mean, I hate to see the Sykes Brothers go down, but, you know, I think of a good, strong meeting with the chairman and maybe with you and Joey, or I mean, even the commissioner that's in that district, to let him know that last Christmas may be his last Christmas.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, Trent, um, I guess, do you have a, if upon acceptance of the bid, um, do they have a start and expected completion date to have the project done?
Yes, sir. I apologize, I will look up how much time we advertised in there. I think we did a hundred and twenty calendar days on the contract, which is normal for this type of contract, cause the work itself is less than a month long of work. So if you award tonight, usually by the middle of next week, we will have the contract documents prepared and sent to the contractor. He'll have ten working days to get his bonds and his insurance certificates and get them back to us. So about the middle of July, we would be having the pre-construction conference. And that's the time that we will set the contract start date and the contract end date. Cause we don't set those until after we have the signed contracts, cause they sign them, we get them back, we get over and we get the chairman to sign them, then we have a pre-construction conference. So then we'll be setting those dates. So, um, probably from middle of July, four months, August, September, October, before Thanksgiving, we should be done. I'm doing quick calendar math.
And, um, just one more question, this, uh, I guess this list, is the material list on the back page?
Yes, sir. These, uh, our contracts are unit price contracts, which means, um, we estimate the quantities that it's gonna take to do the job, and then we actually pay them out at the end of the job based on the amount that they actually installed. So for our asphalt, we measure, you know, we get a certified scale ticket for each truck that comes out there and we pay for the asphalt by the ton. So that way we measure everything that goes out there. You know, very few things on here are a sum, they're all a measured quantity. So that if quantities change up or down, and they go down, we receive the benefit. If they go up, we let you guys know and, you know, then everybody, it's fair to everybody.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know the process to move forward, but I'd like to move forward.
Yes, sir. Chair, entertain the motion.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the bid for the project of Limerick Roadway and Repair for the lowest bid as advertised.
Second. Motion is second, we accept the bid from Sykes, low bid advertised, six forty-six, five twenty-nine, seventy. With all the notes taken, the observations that will be done and monitoring that will be done to ensure the department, if it is elongated, it'll be something out of the control of the contractor.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully Thanksgiving you'll cut tur- you eat turkey on the new road. On your new road. All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Go have a good night.
Trent, Trent, Trent.
Claudia Lane, uh, the water line on Claudia Lane. Uh, I talked with Joey, I guess a month or so, or longer now, and you know, we, we found the, the funding for that. I mean, where, where are we with that?
Um, I've gotta give that to EPD for review and approval. And I'll probably have that within the next two weeks over to EPD for approval.
Just put, just add it to your report, I, I took our track lane off, so just put Claudia in his place.
Sir.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Long by you there, I'm gonna, and I'll apologize for not discussing with you yesterday, but remember our conversation, commissioners, about the private property, uh, the trails come to mind right away. I know you have some in your district. You were gonna do some research and see how other counties handle that. Did you get a chance to, to do that? That's one of those things that when I, especially when I drive by trails, I think about it every time, you know?
About trails or trailers?
Trails, remember that, the, the, the...
On Leroy Coford, the subdivision down there.
The road that's in bad shape, that the...
About the trails.
Trails of the vision?
Yes, yes.
And you were gonna do some research to how other counties perhaps?
So what Long County did, where they had about three or four subdivisions like that, what they ended up doing was biting the bullet, adopted the roads and went in and made some repairs. Bryan County has not done that, they've got a, a couple that are sitting out there like that. And so they, they have acted more appropriately like we have, as far as, it's not a county maintained route. I'm not sure that their conditions are quite as bad as, say, the trails is. And nor not as bad as kinda what Cross Creek is getting to become. So i- it's just kinda been... So i- it's just kinda been, it seems to me, uh, and I did talk to the guys in Ware County about how they handled some of it. And, uh, in Ware County, the, the political will has been to go through and accept them and then do some work on it. Now, you gotta realize that Ware County has six hundred and something miles of roads, most of which are dirt roads compared to our two hundred and something total miles of road that's county maintained. So, you know, they, they've kinda gone through and taken an approach, you know, more of, it's more of a political of what the board of commissioners would like to do and how they choose to spend the money to make that happen. May not necessarily be the exact answer you wanted to hear.
Uh, we want to know what was going on out there among our, you know, among the other counties, how they were handling it, so.
Yes, sir.
A- as you explained it, um, this commission, whether I'm here, whoever sits here, may need to decide how the future runs of splosh or t-splosh if they want to entertain that idea. I'm just, I'm just making the announcement.
Yeah, it just, you know, it really depends on how, you know, what your exposure is gonna be.
Yeah.
You know?
Do we have an inventory? How many of those kinda roads we have, y'all? Do we, do we know?
Well, subdivision.
Yeah, we have at least three.
I got six of them.
Six of them.
Six of them, district one.
Yeah.
With that same kinda problem?
Various stages of problem.
Paved, broken up pavement, dirt.
Could be just there, what's it look like in your?
I think I only have two. I would have to go back and check. I don't have.
You know, Mr. Chairman?
You got one.
One, just one? Okay.
I, I, I think, you know, you asked Trent, you, what all the counties doing, and he said that this county was biting the bullet and all of them weren't. You know, and that you really, that's really your only choice to do something or do nothing. But when you talk about, um, doing work on private roads, I mean, you, you got to get, you got to make them public. And, um, we could talk about subdivisions like the trails, or I think it was something, a trailer park called Beulah Land or something a, a while back. But, 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 um, you, you know, you, um, do you limit that to, um, subdivisions or just private roads? You know, because it's, it's a private road that somebody uses that could probably benefit from us taking their road. I mean, so do you just say a private, a subdivision full of private roads? Or do you just leave it at private roads? And if it's private roads, do you know how many private roads we got? Uh, I mean, a good friend of mine, um, live right across from another good friend of mine, um, Mr. Barrett, uh, Mr., um, Chester Barrett, you know, he's, he's past Mr. Minerva, you know, and it's, it's a sign of that I say Barrett Court. But it's, he's the only one who lived down there. I would consider that a private road, um, private, you know? Not a private subdivision, but private. So, you know, when we talk about private, we, we, are we gonna define it to private subdivision roads or private roads? Cause everybody, if you're gonna get some, some free work, um, everybody's got private, would line straight up to get it. I know I would.
Any idea of their address, just subdivisions or not? Any, any idea?
No, sir, I didn't ask, really, you know, my, my conversations were basically with them, you know, describing the subdivision issues that we had and kinda talking to them about how they handled some of those same scenarios. So, you know, I, I didn't go to, I go, how do you go about accepting private roads? Or private, you know, driveways or roads, you know?
Private is kinda self-explanatory. I mean, you know, we, we got roads now that we don't grade because they private. You know, so now we, we grading dirt roads. That's private. I mean, that, that private is a, is a touching situation.
Shooting from the hip, though, I'm thinking if, if these power rules, if these persons, I, I was thinking really subdivision. But if, to entertain what Commissioner Gillis saying, we do a little bit digging. If, if these persons aren't asking, or some of these people asking for private roads, asking to be made a, a paved road? Is that the scenario?
Well, um, I'm, I'm thinking that if, if they found out that we opened that door, I, I think they're all gonna be asking.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we do have several, uh, roads that we do maybe once or twice a year. Somebody will come ask to have a road taken over for maintenance. You know, we, uh, several years ago, put together that little eleven by seventeen sheet that shows the typical roadway section, what we want. And has a laundry list of things that we want to have done. And usually when we handle them that, that's kinda where it stops.
Well, and, and then we also gave ourselves, uh, the option to, um, to modify that, that criteria. You know, it had to be, uh, had to be in a certain condition before we would take it over, then it had to be so wide. And then we say, well, it's only two or three people that live in down there. It ain't got to be that wide, you, you know, so we, you know, we, we wanna help.
Yeah.
But, uh, at, at what cost? And, and again, private is, is what it is.
It goes back to your point earlier. Do you wanna do something or do you have to do nothing?
Yeah.
So let's, if you can get some more information on the ones that you quoted and see, research, see what they did, how they have it.
I can.
You see the information we can have in our, in our archives. And once again, then we can talk about this, uh, future rounds of splosh or t-splosh, if the commissioners should choose to do so.
Mr. Chairman, the road you're talking about, real familiar with, the trails. Kerry lived in there at one time, uh, Dr. Thomas, but it was a good road. And then there was a hundred and sixty something acres of timber cut. And it's not a good road now. Cause I, Trent, you were probably engineer on that road. What, it was?
What, what trail we talking about?
Uh, trails.
The trail subdivision? No, I wasn't.
Dwayne Phillips and, uh?
No, the trail subdivision was, um,
Harry Rogers.
Harry Rogers did that job and, um, Dale Kiefer was engineer on it.
Okay.
Or not?
Well, anyhow, that's what happened. If, you know, the timber come out of there, it's, it's beat all to pieces. And not long after that, after I got back in office, you know, we started talking about having a permit. Clint was gonna be able to go out there, cause they were tearing up the dirt roads. I know Commissioner Stevens had brought it up. They're coming out the woods and doing whatever, but, uh, you know, if it's, if it's built from the ground up and we feel like it's a good road and our engineer accepts it, that's one thing. But to go off out there and start accepting them, I'm afraid we gonna be going from now on. We'll never get another road done.
Yeah, your approach so far has been a good conservative approach, yeah.
If you just bring the information back, let's, let's at least have that to look at.
Yes, sir.
I think we're kinda be a good example with so many dirt roads. Let's see if they, did they approach dirt roads or just subdivision or what, however they handle. Then, then the answer is the political will of, of the commission.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Trent?
Thank you very much.
Check and see what, uh, Statesboro did.
Okay, I'll be over there tomorrow, so I'll ask.
Okay.
Ask Mr. Mosley about that.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Evening.
Hello, sir.
I know at your last meeting, I think you discussed or had questions regarding the school zone camera program. And I provided a memo that hopefully answered a lot of your questions, but if didn't answer all of your questions, I'm here tonight to answer what remains. And I guess by way of background, I think everyone knows that the sheriff is authorized by law to establish these automated speed detection systems in school zones. That's following an application by the school board to the Department of Transportation and issuance of a permit. And so that's what the sheriff has done with Liberty High, as you know. And, uh, since its inception, I think last year, maybe February of, uh, last year, he has contracted with, um, Redspeed, a private contractor that, uh, manages a lot of these systems and processes violations. So Redspeed, as his agent, has collected revenues from the program. And, uh, after deducting service charges, those monies have been deposited into an account at AmerisBank, which has the county's EIN number. But currently, the sheriff's office is the one that has access to that account. The county has access to account information like balance and transaction reports. But it's the sheriff's office who actually manages the account. And it's the sheriff who determines what law enforcement or public safety initiatives the money is expended on. I think as you folks know, Georgia law stipulates that revenues from these programs can only be spent on law enforcement and public safety initiatives. And so after talking with Redspeed, I think the, your question was first, uh, is that appropriate? And what do other jurisdictions do? And, uh, if you would like, can the sheriff continue his practice, his current practice? And so I spoke to Redspeed and others throughout the state, and probably the most common arrangement is the one we have in Liberty County, where the sheriff's office is the one that, since they process the violations, they're the one that collect the fees. And they expend monies unauthorized, public safety and law enforcement purposes. And I think that's, uh, true in most jurisdictions because these revenues, like fi- civil fines and forfeitures, are also expended by the sheriff's office. So they have a lot of experience and knowledge as to what expenditures are appropriate and which ones are not. But, you know, my reading of the law, uh, I believe, uh, provides that the revenues from these programs are the county's. And so if you folks would like, I think you could insist that the revenues be given to you and you make the decisions on how the money is expended for law enforcement and public safety purposes. But you're free to, um, allow the sheriff to continue his current practice of administering the program and the account and expending the monies on those authorized law enforcement and public safety initiatives. That's kinda been in a nutshell. So I think if your question was, is the current arrangement lawful and appropriate? Yes, it is. And the second question is, you know, can the sheriff continue to do what he is doing currently in collecting the fees and making appropriate expenditures in accordance with Georgia law? I think the answer is yes. But I would recommend to Joey that you folks, if that's your wish, I think it's best to put it in writing and just say, and let the sheriff know that currently the board is willing to allow him to administer the account and make expenditures from the account as authorized by Georgia law. But if you should, you folks should decide to reconsider and you, you would like to manage the funds that, uh, you know, you'll put him on notice and make arrangements for its transfer. But as I mentioned in my memo, there is some, it's a little bit of a gray area in Georgia law as to exactly who is entitled to expend the funds. But my reading, it's the governing authority, which is the board of commissioners. But in most jurisdictions, it's the sheriff, uh, who collects and spends, uh, the monies from these camera, uh, school zone camera programs. See if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Yes, sir.
And I'll ask, um, Matt, on the checks, you seen them?
I've seen, um, copy of the check.
What is on the top of the check? The sheriff's department or the county commissioners?
It's the county.
Both of them or just one?
I remember only seeing the Liberty County, not the sheriff, but I can double check and get back with you.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, that, I, I thought the chairman, you were the only one that Joey could sign. Both of y'all have to sign checks from the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, correct?
Right.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, so you're saying that the check itself is a?
Yeah, I think the funds are deposited into an account that was established by Redspeed. And as I mentioned, my interpretation is I think the revenues are technically funds of the board of commissioners. And so if you'd like, you know, you can decide that you'd be, you'll be the ones to have control of the account and you decide how the law enforcement expenditures should be made or public safety initiative expenditures should be made. But a- a- again, in most jurisdictions, it's the sheriff who assumes that responsibility. So the board needs to decide, would you, you'll, you wanna allow the current practice to continue? That is, the sheriff manages the account and makes the authorized expenditures. Or would you folks like to, uh, control the account and authorize the expenditures? I guess that's the question before you.
If it, if the law says, I mean, it's my feeling, go around the room, but my feeling is, if the law says he can do it and he's using it to offset the budget, which we've talked about here tonight, and he's gonna use that money to help offset his budget in law enforcement, and that's all he looks after is law enforcement. I mean, it's law enforcement, it's school enforcement, uh, SROs, then that's one thing that, that he's entitled to. But I don't feel comfortable if it's got both the board of commissioners names on it and his. And if Joey's not signing it and Donald's not signing it, then his group is signing it, whoever they are, and le- leave it like that, but we don't wanna be a part of it. We shouldn't be a part of it. That's, uh, that's something that I just don't think that we need to be in, involved in it. No more than, than Joey needs to be signing a check with Kenny Howard. I mean, yeah, they're two governments and they're in Liberty County, but I mean, there's just one sheriff. So that's me. I, you know, y'all go down the line and talk about it. I don't really like the cameras. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I, I, I'll tell you that. I mean, when you ask for patrol cars, and he was the first one to say, what causes that individual to not really wanna go in that school is that patrol car sitting outside? Well, if you go down that highway and you get a camera hit you and they send you a bill, that's one thing. But if that vehicle going down that road is in its eighty mile an hour and you don't have any idea, that is a vehicle that's under Amber Alert, you don't know what's in it. I mean, I think it's a whole lot better for a deputy to pull him over. Of course, you know, that's, uh, that's his job. He looks after it. That's just me, my, my feelings on it.
Yeah.
Cameras is not my big thing.
I'm the last one to discuss the merits of the program. I've, you know, my wife and daughter have gotten quite a number. And I've gotten a couple myself. But, uh, and I think, I think the, uh, the chief provided a memo, or maybe Major Kirkendall, at your last meeting, explaining the, the benefits of the program and their estimation and why it should continue. But two different issues. I'm here just to confirm your wishes regarding the funds and whether you would like the current practice to continue, consistent with most jurisdictions, but not all.
Chairman, I, I think, um, you know, because it's, it's a source of revenue and with, as Commissioner Walder said, you know, with the budget being what it is, I think the, the control of that, um, revenue source that comes in should be in the hands of the governing authority, which is the, the board of commissioners. Because if the, if the sheriff in this instance, and I wish he was still here so it, you know, um, so that he can speak if, if he needed to. It seems to me that, you know, he submits a budget and, um, and we approve it, you know, we may cut something and this, but, but, but we approve his budget. And then over here, he has money coming in that's, uh, that he can decide, um, with, with guidelines, um, how to spend it. Where, you know, we may, um, it may be something that was put in under the budget that we review during our budget hearing. And he could, uh, we may say, okay, well, you could get five of these. And that's, and that's it. That's what was approved. But he could get the, if he wanted ten, he could get the other five, you know, from another source. And I just think that the governing authority, which is the board of commissioners for funds coming in the, um, to the county. And, you know, that is a, a public road. It is public, um, the ticket's, I mean, it's, it's public. And I, I think that it, the governing authority is the Liberty County Board of Commissions. And I think that we should have oversight of, uh, how that money is spent. That's, that's my thought.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what else?
And also, I, I think, um, the, the letter from the, from the major, he's, he said, Major Kirkendall, he said that, um, you know, by, by them having it, you know, that it'll save us some time, that they could just go ahead and do it and we don't have to be bothered with it. It's not much of a, of a bother for us to, to decide how to spend taxpayers' money. I mean, that's part of our job. You know, so, um, I, I appreciate the, the help, but, um, we, we could handle that. I don't, I don't think that's a, that's a major concern for any of us up here.
And, and I should note, it's, I don't think it's an either or, either. You know, if the board like to assume control, you know, you can make arrangements with the sheriff's office if there are. From my review of the expenditures, a lot of them are relatively minor.
I saw, yeah, I saw this. Samantha sent me this, yeah.
So you might wanna have an arrangement with the sheriff to identify a portion of the revenues that come in that are allocated to these kind of, uh, daily or reoccurring expenses of the sheriff's office. They're not quite large budget items and reserve the balance of the funds for expenditure by the, the board as it's, at its discretion for other, you know, law enforcement and public safety initiatives. There, there are all kinds of variations. I'm, I'm, I don't want, I didn't wanna misstate and have you think that it's either one way or the other. You know, you can work cooperatively to administer the funds or to expend them as you decide appropriate with consultation with the sheriff. So there are all kinds of variations of. So, there are all kinds of variations of the arrangements that we see throughout the state of Georgia in different counties.
Kelly.
Yes, sir.
There has not been any misappropriation of the funds.
Oh, no, sir. No, no.
So, he's been a good steward of the, the fines. And I wouldn't call it, say, tax dollars, this would be fines for people violating speeding.
Yeah, these, these are civil fi, civil fines, yes, sir, they're collected. And no, no, everything's entirely appropriate regarding expenditures. You know, the county has access to the transactions. The sheriff's office does have quite a bit of experience, as I mentioned, with fines and forfeitures, civil fines and forfeitures, which according to state law, they are given directly and they are authorized to expend only on law enforcement purposes. So, they're well aware of what they can and can't spend these funds for.
Let me ask this question, Kelly. Are you aware or do you know of any other constitutional officer, not only Liberty County, that receives fundings that is not governed by the Board of Commissioners?
I'm not sure understanding your question, but throughout the state, I think all sheriff's departments receive, you know, revenue from civil fines and forfeitures under state law and they make those expenditures. And as I mentioned, again, I haven't conducted an independent analysis, but based on conversations with Red Speed, most jurisdictions have the arrangement that's in practice now where the sheriff collects and administers the account and expends them for law enforcement purposes. I think there was an article in the Savannah Morning News, if I'm not mistaken, last week, there you go, okay, where a similar arrangement exists. So, it's, it's very common arrangement and I'm not here to criticize it, I'm not here to endorse it. I'm just telling you what is the most commonly accepted practice throughout the state and perhaps the reasons why, given the sheriff's experience with other similar funds. But again, I think a reading of the statute, not entirely clear, but it seems to me that the revenues belong to the Board of Commissioners. So, if you'd like to exercise more control, perhaps not total control, if you'd like to work cooperatively with the sheriff, whatever your wish, I think, you know, I'm sure the sheriff would, would respond appropriately.
Yeah, I, there was on, on the six o'clock news of one of the Savannah stations last week, and they were talking about it. And I think in this, in this arrangement, it was the, the people that administered the camera and I guess, I don't know if it's Red Speed or whatever.
Probably, I think they're the most.
But, but it was, it seemed like it was three ways. It was the Red Speed, this, either the city or the governing authority, and because they were associated with the school, the, the Board of Education in Chatham County got a, got a portion of it as well.
Yeah. And that's not, that's not provided by state law. Interestingly, the school board has to apply to the Department of Transportation, but, you know, the revenue is not, there's no appropriation or specific allocation for boards of education. Would it be inappropriate to do that? No. I think that's entirely appropriate if the, if the board, sure.
I'm not speaking on behalf of the, of the Board of Education, but I was just saying that that's what I'd heard on the...
Yes, sir. Now, I should say, you know, for, for school boards that have their own law enforcement, you know, agencies, you know, perhaps the revenue does go to the Board of Education. But, but no.
I mean, is it, is, does the school board ask?
The DOT.
No, do they have to ask the sheriff to get it put up?
I haven't seen the application, but I'm sure that they would because the sheriff is the one who enforces the law and without his cooperation, you wouldn't be able to...
And/or the city police in Savannah, the city police.
Yes, yes.
So, what happens is then the school board approaches them and says, we need to have some policemen or the cameras, that's what they do.
Or vice versa, and I, the initiative might begin with local law enforcement.
Yeah.
But, but yes, it's, technically, the Board of Education is the one that applies to DOT, yeah. And, and the chief law enforcement official, you know, in counties, being the sheriff, they're the ones who are actually responsible for its implementation. And they can accomplish that through contract with an agent, which in our cases, Red Speed and other jurisdictions might be other vendors.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, I had a, a good meeting with Chief Hagan yesterday and we discussed, among other things, we, we discussed this as, as well. And I think one of the, I mean, you know, people have been calling, I guess, you know, talking about it throughout the community. And, and Chief Hagan said that the, the cameras are only in operation during school, like, they're off right now because school is out for the summer. But he said that when school takes back in, they'll be from, from seven o'clock to four o'clock. And the question that, that, that people had asked me about it, that I heard people talking about is that if it's for the safety of the entrance and exit of the school, why would the camera be on at eleven o'clock in the morning or one o'clock in the afternoon as opposed to from seven in the morning to eight thirty or from two o'clock in the afternoon to three thirty when school is, you know, people going in and, and going out and you still also have two crossing guards flashing yellow lights and a patrol car, you know, so that the school zone seems to be pretty well protected? And then, you know, the buses start running and school takes in. But the camera is still running Monday through Friday from seven to four. And it seemed like the safe passage in and out of the school has already been taken care of by the, the flashing lights, by the blue lights, the yellow lights and the two guards. And then, you know, nine o'clock is free and clear. But the camera is still there and the speed limit is still forty-five, I, I believe, if school is in. So, that, that was some of the questions that people had. But, but again...
All good questions.
Huh?
All good questions.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, but that's, that's why it came up. But, but my point was, I, as the governing authority, I would think that, that, that we should have oversight of the funds. That's, that's me, that's, that's my thought. But I, I could live with it either way, but that, that's my thought. I think that's, that's the way it should be.
And I think you made the distinction, Commissioner Gillip, but I do want to make clear, is the sheriff is the one who implements the program. So, he's responsible for the, the automated speed detection system. You're just responsible for the revenue.
Right.
So, you know, if your constituents should come and complain, you really have no responsibility over the actual system in place. It's the sheriff and the Board of Education that, that have responsibility for that.
So, Samantha would be the one that...
Receive all the calls.
Are you all right with it?
That's right.
Kelly, I think what I heard Commissioner Gillip said, and I believe I read it, it says that as long as a child, a child is in that building, school or institution, that camera is and can be in operation. So, I think that covers that, that timeframe, what you're talking about. So, as long as it says HR is in that, doing normal school hours.
You know, the sheriff is not the exception and most all jurisdictions, it's the same policy. And I think it's just to condition drivers and discourage speeding through school zones at any time. Interestingly, I had the same question. I thought that there probably would be no speeding early in the morning and late in the afternoon during the times of, of, you know, drop off and release from schools. But surprisingly, that's when most of the automated tickets are, are, are given, is during the morning hours and afternoon hours. So, I can't explain it either, the, the conduct of drivers, but that's, that's when most of the tickets are issued.
And, and Commissioner Stevens, you know, the definition of a child and, and the time that the cameras is on, that, that's fine. I was just saying, you know, the, the question that was presented to me, why at eleven o'clock in the after, in the morning?
Right.
When school is in. Now, you know, of course, I know people...
Coming and going.
People going, going to come and go, but not at the rate that they do at seven o'clock in the morning. I'm not, not coming out of Donnell, by Donnell Woods Stadium like they going in and out because, I mean, the, the crossing guards stop people to let the buses get in and out. They stop people to let the parents go in and out or in everybody else. I mean, that's, that's for that purpose. But there's no crossing guard there at eleven o'clock because there may be one person in there that, that's trying to get out. That's, that's not what's doing it.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions and I, on the fines and forfeitures, these are just the ones that are caught by Red Speed or whatever, they go into that account?
Yes, ma'am.
But how about the other fine and forfeitures? Does that, does that go into a separate account, like a, you know?
I guess I, we should step back. Usually, you know, traffic violations in general, there are misdemeanor criminal violations and they're processed through the courts and they have dedicated accounts for those purposes. The, the civil fines and forfeitures I referenced for the sheriff's office, more in the form of, say, drug forfeitures, you know, property that seized or money that seized in connection with illegal activities, whether it's state or federal. You have federal and state laws which require, which provide for sharing of those confiscated monies or properties. And most state law and federal law provides for a portion to be paid directly to local law enforcement that participated. And the sheriff, I believe, maintains his old, own, own account for those purposes. The county may be a steward of those accounts, but technically, I believe the sheriff is the one who has control of those funds. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's two different accounts.
You have a large pool of traffic funds, citations that are paid in the courts, that's most of the funds. And you have a smaller account and source of funds for, you know, monies or properties that are confiscated with illegal activities. And you have this third set, simply revenues from the automated speed detection systems in school zones.
From what I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
From what I gathered, I, I called my counterpart for Bryan County, and he told me the, the ones they have in Bryan County and the city of Richmond Hill. So, he put me in touch with the mayor, who said they had the same, you know, what we discussed in the night, they all discussed.
Yep.
And he said he would not, you know, it's made a great improvement with speeders in, in the school zones. But being in City of Richmond Hill, it is, the money, the funds are run through the, the city. The county is different, but the funds are run through the city. They were ready, they ought to come from Savannah. Savannah has some of the cameras, well, has Chatham County. It seems the same setup. And, and once again, and I saw, I think, Commissioner Gillip, what you saw, everybody likes the idea that it's a safer school zone. Everybody likes that. But a lot of funds are collected and their security blanket is that the state rules dictate how you can use the funds.
That's right.
So, I did not get to call Chester Ellis in Savannah, ask him about, you know, how the funds are handled, whether it's the county does it or the sheriff office. But the, what I received is basically the same information that, that we received. So, and if, if we can get, you know, accountability for the, for the funds now, I do agree that when you're trying to do budgeting, it's kind of hard to know. When we're asked for certain items, you know, what, what are we asked to cover? And then, what, does the sheriff office want to cover with the funds, funds they receive? So, I'm not sure how you manage that piece of it, you know, that piece of it. But as far as trusting, have an issue with him? No, I don't have an issue with, with that. But as a, as the fiduciary for the sheriff's department, the, the question does arise, how do we, how do we have oversight or understand how, that, that we know where they use those funds to budget for versus what they're asking the county to budget now? So, who's figured that piece out?
Well, I, I don't want to, I don't want to volunteer my, my services, but if you'd like, I mean, Joey or I, or both of us could have conversations with the sheriff. We can get input from other jurisdictions and we could come to some understanding about, you know, the process for expending these funds, who should approve it, the impact on the sheriff's budget, various things of that kind, if you'd like.
Yeah.
You folks tell me.
I, I think, Kelly, you, you said that, you know, that is, that is kind of great, but the governing authority kind of clears up the mud, you know, and we are the governing authority. And, and we are not saying that anything is not on the up and up, no, no, no one is saying that. But as the governing authority, if we had it, then that, that, that's where it needs to be. I mean, that, I mean, as muddy as the state law is, or as muddy as that law is, governing authority, to me, clears that up. And there's only one governing authority in Liberty County, for Liberty County, and that's the Board of Commissioners. That's, that's about as clear as any bell you can ring.
Why, why don't we, like, why don't we sit down with the sheriff and the chief and just raise this issue? How, how do, they need to understand how we operate. We understand how the funds can be used because the state regulates that. But as a commission, when it, when it comes to the purchasing of items, how, how do this commission know that, okay, the sheriff office is able from those funds to purchase radios or, or whatever out of those funds? How, how do we, how do, how do we keep an ear and eye on that? Once again, like Commissioner Gillip, not for any kind of distrust, but just for, just for doing business. So...
Chairman, you throw up a real good point.
Yeah.
And that is, if we, if we hadn't had individuals to call, we might not have never known anything about how the, I mean, there was no dialogue between the board and the constitutional officer. I mean, even if one comes in here and needs a computer, we talk about it. But I mean, this is something that we ought to have some discussion on. I mean, what you're talking about is you're assuming to take the money, Kelly. And Commissioner Gillip, I, I do tend to agree, but how long has this thing been in effect?
Rough.
Money has been collected already? This didn't start two weeks ago? I mean...
As I mentioned, I think it began in February of last year, if I'm not mistaken.
So, you don't know how much money has come and gone since?
Yes, like I said, the county has full access to account information as far as transactions, balance, things of that kind. But that, my, my, going forward, should you wish the sheriff to continue administration, that would probably be one of the requirements, not only access, but monthly reporting regarding expenditures.
Let us sit down, Commissioner, and work that out with the, with the sheriff department.
Mr. Chairman, let me say this. We're talking about accountability. Instead of just looking at this one particular issue, we've got some other issues with some funding that we also need to look at since we say we are the governing authority. Let's go at, let's go look at the money that the industrial authority has collected, which , and they don't have the authority to do so, but they're still sitting on it, but we can't do anything with it and we don't know how much. Also, let's look at the other money that has come in on passports in Liberty County. Where is that money? So, if we're going to look at monies, let's look at all monies.
I'm ready. Yeah, I mean, let's look at it. But what, what do we have to do to, to do that, Commissioner Stevens?
Well, I don't know, but I have mentioned that several time up here on this board and it went on death s.
Yeah, we want, we want to address this as progressively and as gentlemanly as we need to. Commissioner Stevens makes a valid point that when we came on board, some of us remember that we found out that certain constitutional officers have access to certain funds for certain services before in their office. And we've, we've never gotten reports on, on those items. I know, I haven't seen anything, so I have no idea what they, what they are.
And I wouldn't make any assumptions, different funds have different laws, which govern their use and govern their control. So, if you'd like to do it, we can, but I'd recommend one bite at a time. But tonight, I think, given the sheriff is a constitutional officer and you have a, you know, ongoing working relationship with him, I'd recommend a dialogue at least to get his input and thoughts and the board can share its thoughts and then you can make the ultimate decision after those discussions.
That's what I recommend, can we?
I mean, Joey doesn't be up to you and Samantha, if y'all want to...
And I'll meet with the sheriff.
I feel like y'all could...
Let's do that.
Do this?
Yeah. Let's do that.
We need to.
Do what?
To meet?
To meet and then to decide, is that something that you can put in? I mean, that would be a separate account, right?
It is, it's, it's a dedicated account.
Already have a separate account.
But let's, let's, let's keep the options open now. I'm not saying, I'm, I'm saying meet to discuss.
Yes.
My, my county attorney, who I'm looking at, I, has helped, has told me that most counties using this company, their procedure is exactly as the one here is in Liberty County.
But it's based on conversations with the company, yes, sir.
You're right. What, what I want to do is give some teeth to tracking how those funds, so that this commission will be knowledgeable of what the sheriff has at his disposal so that when we try to, when we have to entertain invoices or requests from him, then we'll know, you know, the financial side of it.
Yes, sir.
Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I think too, Kelly, and you mentioned to me that in order, if it stays like it is, then the commission would then have an agreement with the sheriff to clear up, to make sure... then the commission would then have an agreement with the sheriff to clear up, to make sure we're not in that gray area, so to speak. And it would stipulate exactly in that agreement with the commission that this account's going to be established, it's going to be run over here. But these are the guidelines. And then the commission basically gives that authority to the sheriff. So, so it's all clear, I think.
Okay, alright. Can we do that by consensus? And we'll bring it back to.
That's good.
Okay, alright.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Mr. Kelly, if you'd be so kind to arrange that meeting.
I will, yes, sir.
And if y'all see me tomorrow, that mean I can live with it. And if not, maybe I couldn't.
Alright, thank you folks.
Thank you, sir. Great coverage. For the food truck, Samantha, you alright, you need coffee?
Can we, can we go back, can we go back to the?
You want to do that now? Thank you, Mr. Corn, for hanging in there with us.
He was working hard the other day.
Reggie, Reggie was?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, man, come on.
No, I got to speak up for him now.
I know that.
A couple of, a couple of notes, and I think it's important, and I'll, I'll relate a couple of examples. The budget can increase from one year to another, but not actually cost you more money at the end of the year, right?
Right.
So if, because you've got several programs like that, and we're going to walk through those real quickly. A perfect example would be a CDBG grant. Where you had to take the money in, you got a budget for the $2 million, your budget goes up. But in the end, we're not seeing the revenue side, you're getting that money back, right? So, so we'll walk real quickly, and this, this is that summary. I highlighted a few places here that the budget did increase, let's say a hundred thousand dollars or more in those divisions. And if you remember, contracts went up and data processing, that was the main thing there. Risk management is where your insurances are grabbed, and your other insurance cost is out there. Public defender is an example. Okay, so that would impact that budget difference, but you had blocked your direct outflow from your pocket at the end of the day, because you're paying 38% of that. But it increased half a million bucks.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's, there's a half a million of it.
Right there.
Flemington law, less than 100, but it's 100% reimbursable. School resource officer, so this is fully funded BOE, the action you took tonight is not actually fully funded by the board. One of those positions will be funded by the sheriff's department, so I didn't want you to be misled with that.
Libel elementary.
That's correct. The election voter registration, I had a note made there, also went up. But of course, some of that's reimbursed, so they're taxing the cost of some of those municipal elections, but they're 100% reimbursable on that. Purchasing is where, right now, that merit longevity and pay plan money is stored. I think you had a program, a new program contract that the tax commissioner mentioned to you that he's having to implement because of state guidelines there, his went up. Same with the assessor's office, on a contract they had to go up on. Government buildings went up, we talked to the government building guy when he came in, and if you remember, his materials and supplies and filters and all that. To do that. General engineering is another one of those areas. Mr. Long is locked into his contract, the actual amount you'll pay Mr. Long will not increase. But what that is showing is also where he does the work to do the reviews for, for those warehouses and stuff that come in, but that money's reimbursed, that is collected and sent back over here. So we get reimbursed for that money. District attorney, another, almost 100,000, but again, that's only, we collect back from all the other counties on that. Jail operations, certificate increase, 79,000, because their contract for inmate care.
Insurance.
That you've got with correct health went up. Of that, okay, so, so that's got to happen. The other things that happened is this, and we mentioned them. You funded things last year for a half a year. So now we're got the full year of that. Part of that impact is in the fire, along with the new people. So there's a half year to a full year of funding there, same thing at EMS. Road department, material costs went up, Mr. Wells came to talk to you about that. Same with mosquito control, even though theirs is minor, their cost of chemical went up this year. Cecil recreation increases a little bit for the library there. The other big thing is this, so last year at village time, you said, or maybe a budget time, you said, we are going to use some of the fund balance to help balance this budget.
Do.
That's dangerous for recurring expenses. Very dangerous, but we did, you did. You used 854,222 dollars out of it.
In excess of your other financing uses.
Yes, in excess of the other financing uses, so you budgeted for those plus that. This year, in this budget, it did not show a use of fund balance in there. So we're budgeting for that now. If you want to, not suggesting, but if you want to use fund balance, then you could do it again. And you can lower that, how much ever you want to lower it, to do it. But that is not a decision you necessarily have to do tonight.
Right.
Right? That's something that after you get the digest, you can do it.
Follow the process.
Say, we testified to the need for this budget and breathe their gun up. Do what we need to do to use fund balance or whatever to do, if that becomes necessary.
Chair. And Joey, Samantha. Fund balance is also used when we have, let's say hurricanes or storm come through, we go ahead and foot the bill, and then we go back and try to.
Yes, like I said.
Elect it, right?
Said it's a cash flow, it's cash flow. So, if, if, if we did not have sufficient fund balance out there to carry you, yes, you'd go to the bank immediately borrow money while you were waiting on on potential federal reimbursement, if declared a disaster to come back in. You know, the other things that are in there too is health insurance. So it's budgeted within every department. Cost of health insurance, about 8%. Okay, so that'd be 8% on top of about a million and a half bucks. Okay, so it's pretty substantial. And then other salary increases that we just got, and we had to plug in, that were authorized by state legislature. That we just got those affected.
You can go and say.
Constitutional officer. And if those constitutional officer's salary by local legislation was tied to another position, like some of the superior court judges are, then would, might affect some other positions too, like, I don't know, other judgeships. That when, when it was created, local legislation, it said it shall be equal to proportion of X, then it would be funded there also. But those are really the major increases, and I think I may have run more than three more million.
Thank you for refreshing my memory, and that's good information, because it's coming back.
We heard it, but it's good to hear it.
Big things, I think, are the half year, the difference you're looking for, is that half year, it's health insurance, and it is a million dollars of use of fund balance. Last year that, right, that we're not programming to use, but you could.
Yeah, I remember that fine tooth comb, I remember that.
And that red pen.
But you got mad because we asked you, and you left storming out of here.
That was him?
I know, I, I know you well enough, you left out of here saying, wait a minute, I thought I had all this sewed up.
I think I said it, I, I, no, anyway, yeah.
Anyway, Ms. Chairman.
No, the wheels were already turning.
I understand that, but understanding that there's, I mean, all of us will be hit with something that we hadn't been hit with before.
It may be a good job, quite honestly, in, in future when we do budget, to bring this little sheet back at, at this time, to remind us of the things that that we have worked through, because some of us, like Commissioner Stevens, I remember them, I remember most of them, but some of them you brought back I had forgotten about.
I didn't, I didn't forget the insurance, and that was an absolute shocker, and I knew that the EMS was going to be expensive, and I knew the fire department was. I just, you know, it's maybe my mindset, Joey, but, you know, you start a fireman off as a fireman. I mean, you know, I, I see we got sergeants and majors and stuff like this. I mean, they still have to hold a hose. Marion's held one for years, and he can tell you, you can be chief in what, about two weeks, because you're the only one there.
Nah, it takes a little bit longer now.
Huh?
Takes a little bit longer.
But I mean, it just, you know, I, I just want to make sure now, I mean.
That's, that's good.
We're there, and, and this, you know, I'll go and say, this commission can feel, I hate to say it, proud. You can rest assured that you've done your due diligence.
You went through it.
You've done the due diligence.
Yeah, and even things again, I was sitting there thinking, where is that other 3 million? I got to get up and go see. But even half a million in the DA line, it's really not attributable.
Right.
Just to this DA and stuff like that.
Circuit wide, yeah, you have to account for.
Really throw that out of proportion.
We, we all still learning too.
Okay.
But thank you.
Make a motion that we adopt a budget. Uh-oh, I don't put away some, help me out, help me out, Commissioner Stevens.
The 2024 budget request for $57,877 and $323.
I'll second that.
That'd be right.
Just a note, yes, ma'am, that'll be for the general fund, there's actually three that you'll approve tonight, if you remember. And so that's the general fund.
Well, Sam Lee, you have your papers? Or does Joey have it?
The resolutions.
The resolutions she does not have, but it's basically to adopt the general fund budget. You'll make one for the special revenue funds, and then you'll do one for the splash, splash.
Is all that in, in here?
We need to adopt them separately.
Separately.
Yes, sir, please.
So this one is the?
General.
General fund.
Okay.
Alright, alright, a motion and a second for a discussion, all in favor, bow your hands, please. In your polls. Three, two.
So we don't adopt a budget.
Next.
Well, no, I mean, we got to avoid operate, so.
Then you need a motion to keep the budget ideas, that's the only way we can go. To operate under the current budget.
No, I'd recommend that what you do is not do anything tonight. Is try to, so we can, I mean, I'm not sure where this is going to lead us, but we can try to run an ad and have it appear on the 28th. Which means you need to have a budget prepared to adopt by that date, which means we need to go ahead and meet. And do whatever you're going to do on that budget. Because what we're going to need to do, if the decision of the board, which we really need to talk about now, if the decision of the board is to try to run on what you ran on last year, number one, you'll go over.
Yeah.
But number two is that we need time to go back and recalculate those half year to full year numbers only. And then reset the operation line items to exactly what they are. And 24, because you can't go back on the half year stuff, right, for the salaries.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So we'll need time to go back and calculate what it costs you to operate or run today. And then just adopt, if you're going to try to adopt the 23 budget, so to speak. Is to go back and just do the new line items. Try to do it on a continuing basis, you're going to have some contracts that are going to come up that you're not going to pay. Critical infrastructure contracts. I mean, I wouldn't recommend that.
And the half year items are all salaries.
Half year items are all salaries.
Now, commissioners, did we not vote to to ensure that our staff was paid fairly?
Yes, sir.
That was the only thing that we felt like it was important, though.
Well, no.
The most important thing.
Well, there are other things, I, I hear you, but they're important too. And I thought we had gone through this thoroughly, but I can't change your minds, but, but when it comes to the insurance, once again, we.
Well, the insurance has already been paid.
Yeah.
So you're not going to back out on that.
Yeah.
Insurance is, you know, the insurance is definitely there, it's, it's there to stay. So the only thing you could do is either is, is adopt your 23 operational line items, except for what has to be adjusted, insurance, you know, health insurance definitely got to be paid every month to do that, so, but we need time to reset those numbers. And then you need, we need to meet as soon as you can, like tomorrow or Friday, at work.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess I'm asking, what's the solution the board's looking for? Do we know what the solution is, or are we just?
I don't, then you're not giving the digest time to manifest itself to show where we are.
Going to the digest, you won't have those numbers firmly until August or September.
Yeah.
Joey, we, we talked about something earlier that we don't know anything about, which is how much money's in this, this account here that we've talked about? I mean, every dollar amount that's in, wherever it's at, it's got to be accounted for. They're, they're telling how much is in, I mean, you talk about.
Less than, what was it? Two hundred and some thousand dollars.
Where did everything go, is what I'm saying.
That's what the checks were about, weren't they?
Well, that's, I think that's the checks we sent you all, you got a copy of them.
Yeah, that's what the checks were about.
But the, you know, what's going to happen in the future after that? You don't know, so we might wind up having to fund something else.
Up to the board.
Well, I mean, Kelly's gone, but he says he wants it to, he felt like that his legal opinion is that it would belong, and that's, I mean, we don't know how much total money's being taken in. I, I, again, I do not want to run our counties on fines and forfeitures, I just don't do that. There's, there's no way to even talk me into it, even though it used to be a big thing. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not in for this, fines and forfeitures and radars being used to write people ticket to meet a budget.
But remember, those funds are dictated by the state as to how you can use them. You can't use them across the board
Those funds.
To run the sheriff office, so that's just a piece of our total budget, we still have a total budget that we had gone through, and, and once again, this list is very helpful. Because Commissioner has asked a good question, where was, where was the other fund? So, Mr. Brown and Sam did a good job of demonstrating where that is, so I, I don't, I don't have an answer.
I guess I'm looking for, for the board for recommendation or suggestion. So everybody's had the budget, everybody's looked through it, everybody's attended the workshops. To staff, what recommendation do you have in a project area that you want to see reduced? I mean, we're just taking action tonight, but we don't have a solution, we're not going anywhere, we're, we're just saying we don't want to do it, but there's no offer for a change.
What, how much, how many meals is it higher?
Not any meals higher, because we ain't got the digest yet.
Well, I mean, give an idea, how much different would it have been?
Wouldn't do that, wouldn't do that, because I don't have, we don't have the digest.
So you really don't know that we may not produce a way more?
Correct, you may produce way more revenue than you need with this budget.
Produce a way less.
And it's been like that since the county was born, because it has the July 1st year, and every year's been the same thing. You never will have the digest on July 1st or June, never have.
Never.
Never have.
Well, let's hold it, let's hold it where it's at for last year, and we'll move forward. We know we can meet that.
No, you won't meet that, because expenses have gone up.
Yeah.
You won't meet, you can't operate on what you did last year. You won't meet, you can't operate on what you did last year.
You got. You got.
I mean, the half-years alone are gonna kill you.
Yeah.
Just on what you funded a half a year.
Yeah.
But the, the part that, um, you know, about not approving it tonight, I think, um. And if we was gonna go back and try to make some cuts, I think, George, but the part that, um, that's a stumbling block for me is that, um. Uh, if we approve it, we can't touch the constitutional offices.
Right.
Yeah, now, see, so that's, that.
Well, and you never will be able to, in any year that you approve it, with the July first fiscal year and the digest comes out later. You can't go back and adjust constitutionally their, their budgets. I mean, it's always been that way, that's nothing new.
And remember this too, if, if I may, I'm sorry, let me cut you off. The constable officers who I remember making their report, their budgets were very lean.
Yes.
And the, I know in personnel, there were some jailers looking, I think, that the sheriff asked, well, and we took those out.
Well, and we talked about going up on expenses because of gas and because of electricity.
Yeah.
And because of fuel and everything else, and we did.
So we, we followed the process, we, I mean, we, we maximize our potential.
I don't know, yeah.
I don't.
I guess we'll seek legal advice as to whether they're closed down on July first or what to do. We'll notify the divisions of what's going on. Tell them to prepare.
I mean, I guess, Richard, he's a good example, his, his budget's always leaning mean, but, but the others follow suit, I remember that, you know. Whether it be Judge Anderson or.
One of the less budget.
Yeah, Judge Anderson or Judge Astrowall, they all had very minimal requests.
I mean, I, you know, I think, I guess, what you could do is adopt la, at this point at least, adopt last year's budget. With only the differences in specific items we're fixing to talk about increased, and those would be the things we talked about. You know, not decreasing salaries, basically leaving them like they are, not cutting positions, leaving them like they are right now. Um, paying the debts that have to get paid. Um, insurance obviously is an increase. Um, trying to think what else is on that list, but basically only adopting the twenty-three budget, subject to things you have to do to continue operations. Until you can meet again. But again, once you put that money out there to the constitutional officers, you can't take it back. Even if you do the twenty-three budget right now, and even if the digest comes in and it won't support the twenty-three budget, you can't take that money back.
Joe, we'll make it work, just sleep on it tonight.
Y'all wanna go in the back room and have a back room conversation?
Well, we can't.
No.
Not over the budget.
Yeah.
I do, I do the executive session when we get.
Do you wanna do the, uh, did you wanna adopt, what, we got the twenty-three, you wanna wait, or you ordered a motion to go into executive session?
You could adopt for twenty, you could adopt for twenty-three, subject to those, only the stuff you want to approve tonight.
I'll make the motion that we keep it at the twenty-three budget, and before anything is done on some of those, this, this, uh, talk about those. Because I still have a, I'm, I'm looking at a few things there that I don't really like. And I've heard a lot of things that I don't really like, but I'll make that motion if, um, if you wanna try to. Give yourself some sleeping time tonight, you probably won't sleep, but that'll be okay. A lot of us, I haven't got any the last two or three nights since people have been calling me.
You're not giving him enough to work with.
So, subject to leaving things currently operational?
Yes, sir.
That is gonna require.
You said something, Joe, about meeting Friday or something, did you? Whatever you want to do.
The bar, we can meet the bar.
But what's gonna be different?
Nothing.
To make a balance, that we will have to use fund balance, like. Just to make, just to come back to last year's budget, we have to use one point seven million.
Yeah, you have to use.
Not including the insurance.
That's true.
Increase.
Yeah, you'll go ahead and draw down your fund balance a couple of months.
Think a better decision is to approve the budget. As we normally do, wait on the digest, see what the digest, and, you know, and I think most of us, none of us has crystal balls, but we've seen the growth around here, so. Gotta be some positivity in the digest. Minus whatever the, um, appeals do, and then we'll move forward, but I, I don't wanna cripple the county, y'all. We've never done that, Joe, since I've been up here.
No, sir, it's the first time it's ever been done.
We've never done that.
Do you wanna go ahead and adopt the other, so a motion to adopt last year's budget? Subject to those approvals from last year for the full year funding? I mean, so that those people can stay at work that were approved last year, firefighters, EMTs?
How far are they budgeted for now?
Till the end of the year, June thirtieth.
So they're already budgeted till the end of June?
Yes, sir.
And how, how much will the fund balance do to, how far will that carry?
Well, I mean, you'll continue to operate through June, but if you adopt your twenty-three budgets, like Samantha's saying. You, you, your, your motion needs to also include the use of fund balance to operate. Because that is what the twenty-three budget you approved did.
Okay, write that motion down then, I'll make it, or you want me to tell you?
Yeah, I got it. And then pay the insurance, I mean, obviously, we're gonna do that, I just think you need to, you need to pay your bills.
Certainly.
Definitely.
And we'd welcome any suggestions anybody has after the meeting on what you wanna do after that, so.
Joe, you said that that, that we won't get the digest until the fall?
You won't get that, after, until after all the appeals run. And everything.
Talking about September?
September usually.
September, October. So that's when we normally adopt the millage, yeah.
And we do that in, um, October or so?
You do that usually in October, but after you get the digest, you got some advertising you'll have to go through and stuff like that. So Commissioner Walden made a motion and.
What, what is that motion?
To adopt a budget consistent with twenty-three appropriations. And you said something about fund balance needed to be in that motion. And use of fund, which includes use of fund balance to run those operations. There'll be no other, no other increases, I mean, the, but, the, all the departments will have to try to figure out. How to at least pay the critical bills if they come due before then. And if not, then, you know, staff will let you know what you're gonna be in default of.
Well, we won't be in default, Joe, we got borrowing time, don't we? Can't we borrow some money?
You can borrow any money, you can borrow up to the total value of your assets.
I would not want to borrow money.
Well, I, I know, you don't, no, I don't wanna borrow money, these people pay their taxes, don't wanna borrow money, but some of them are.
I don't know that, I know we haven't did this. And I'm not sure exactly, you know. Where y'all wanting to go with it, or where we need to go with it, but, um. I don't know, go back in there and cut the budget three percent, I know you.
Well, that's tough, I mean, you don't really, can't really do it across the board. Because you got somebody that's got a budget of, you know.
A low, yeah.
Fifteen thousand dollars or a flat corner.
So.
You think, cut ten percent, it would help him, because he'd only cut a few thousand dollars.
Right.
Go to, you know, another one that'd say cut three percent, and he's got one point two million dollars in the budget, and. And then you got, you know, uh, the state budget, well, that's, the motion needs to include, definitely, you've already approved the budget for public defender, which involves the other counties. So you're gonna have to honor that. Um, and the DA's budget, so, you know, you go in there and adopt that, so the DA will go back to those other counties. And say the commission, liberty's not in. Um, I, I don't know what'll happen, I'll be interested in what.
I, I just know that, you know, when you look at the second page, this comparative review, and it's eight million dollars increase sixteen percent. And, um, and I know it includes the things that, that, that we wanted to do for the employees and, uh. Cost of insurance and, uh, funding of the people that were only funded for a half a year. And, um. You know, I mean, it's. It's just, just, it's just hard for me to, um, look at that second page and think that, um, that it's okay. It's, it's just, it's just hard, um, to swallow. I know we've never, you know, came to this point before, we always did it and, and set the millage and, and all the other things that we've done, but, um. You know, it's, it's a little difficult for me.
Got a motion on the floor, if anybody wants to. Second it.
That, and, and what was it again, now that we're gonna, um, and use fund balance to, um, to, to keep us in business? I'll, I'll second.
Till it runs, till it runs out, and then we'll borrow money.
I'm not for the borrowing the money part, but.
Well, I ain't either, but we'll do whatever it takes.
All right, um, motion and a second that we.
That we, uh, I think. We keep the twenty-three and we use fund balance to stay in business, basically, wasn't it?
Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, let me know my share of hands, please. Those opposed?
All right, man, where we started from.
See, Lou, we got it, so I'm what you need to do, Mr. Chairman.
Order in some lunch.
Let us know, Joe.
I could see it, guys, if there was a, a resolve, I don't see a, you know, a, a resolve.
Only thing I see, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I know one place that probably could get thirty thousand from, that's about it. And, hey, that's not gonna help. Say if we explore those other avenues that I mentioned, that's another source of bringing in some funding. I know we don't probably don't wanna touch that, but, hey, the money needs to be where it's supposed to be at.
So passport fees by law are retained by, until the statutes changed in the state of Georgia, the clerks around the state get to keep the passport fees? There's no way for the commissions to get that? Legislature, um, tried to get that changed, there was a, a move up to do that this year, but it failed. So the commission wouldn't have any access to those funds right now legally anyway.
Okay, what about the other ones that I mentioned?
Uh, the other ones, that you're talking about, the development authority, actually, there was a change in ownership of two industries in the development park last year. And in that exchange, before the closing happened, they contacted the tax assessor's office and tried to get a value so that they could pay into escrow. The amount that was due at time of closing, and that amount could not be determined by the tax assessor's office for some reason. Uh, so, in good faith, what that company did, because they're not taxes due, so they're not payable, they're, the, the tax assessors, they needed that information to generate a bill for the tax commissioner to give the company. Um, tax assessors couldn't get the information, tax commissioner couldn't generate a bill, so in good faith, they couldn't delay the closing of the corporations, the swap in ownership. So they paid in good faith the money into the development authority and said, just hold it till they figure it out and then give it to them. But to my knowledge, my last conversation with Kelly, which is not really part of my business, is that that still had not been figured out by the tax assessors or tax commissioner. And so no bill has been generated, and so that money continues to hold until such time as that bill's generated by the tax commissioner.
So somebody needs to talk with the tax assessors and the industrial authority. So that the money can be put where it needs to be.
Yeah, I think the industrial authority's waiting on a bill to be able to pay that on behalf of the corporation. Again, my understanding.
Joe, Joe, let, let me ask you some questions, now, we, we got, um, some people now that we funded. For a half, half a year, and that half a year ends on the thirtieth, right?
Well, your phys, your whole fiscal year ended on the thirtieth, so.
Right, but, but the, the people that we only hired in the twenty-three budget for half a year, they, they, they're our employees and they're gonna be with us.
They'll be with you until the money runs out to pay them. Right? And you, and you'll, you'll probably make a decision by then on what you're gonna do.
But, but I, I saw, and, and I didn't see the slide up here tonight, but, um, Samantha had sent me some stuff when I, um, last week, and I was looking at it, and there was some, um. Some proposed new positions, and some of those, we were looking at funding, um, for six months.
Only half a year already, right? They weren't coming in till January.
For January.
Your station, your, your fire station will be finished, you know, September, October, and, you know, y'all will make a decision on what you wanna do as far as staffing it.
And.
Because none of these, you know, your twenty-three budget won't include that, it won't include any new personnel or anything, that's, you know.
But the, the, this budget here that we would include those new firefighters, for example, starting in January.
The budget that was proposed, right.
The one that, that we.
Yeah.
Had a deadlock on.
Yeah.
And, and we, we could look at those positions, and I, I think the chairman said that, um, you know, the best way that it could be said, we got a brand new, uh, fire station. But we don't have no firemen down there. But the fire stations were built, um, with splotch?
Correct.
But the, the manning of them, the, having the employees down there is not paid for by splotch, that's paid for.
That's correct.
From this.
Yeah.
And, you know, um. So, um, I think I said earlier, you know, what we have today, can we get, can we make it through tomorrow with what we have today? And if you look at that, then do you need to, um, bring in these additions? O- other than the fact that we got a brand new building with, with nobody in it? Um, I don't know if we, uh, but to bring in, you know, hire another fifteen or twenty employees, you know, for, for, for that purpose. And, um, there's a cost associated with that.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm concerned too, as, as you speak about the message it sends to those prospective.
Yeah, it, 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 it will send a message, but so will.
To prospective employees, countywide, really.
So will raising taxes, that, that, that sends a message that, um, that people who, uh.
Yeah, but we had explained, and our community had embraced the idea of standing up to full-time fire department, it's gonna be enhancement to the county, so.
I understand.
And, and we explained very carefully that the insurance issue was out of our control, I mean. And I can't fix that, but I need insurance to cover my facilities.
Yes.
Yes, the S, what the SRO and all that and stuff like that, and I've heard, um, different stories about whether or not the value that, that brought.
Well, I guess that's the other thing too, is that contract's supposed to start July first, but theoretically. Well, I guess that's the other thing too. Is that contract supposed to start July first, but theoretically, it won't be funded to that extent?
We were only funding one. Is that right?
Right.
Right, but your budget would need to increase just to be able to book that. And the other revenue coming in.
And do the accounting part.
Pretty confusing, right? We operate at a twenty-three level. It will not include increases for SRO.
There's going to be some other fallouts you're going to discover too.
There's going to be. Yep.
So I'll search out, we'll search out legal guidance tomorrow and let the board know.
They want to talk about food truck?
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is the, uh, ordinance I provided you on last week. Um, made a couple tweaks in the ordinance, or proposed ordinance, should I say, on, uh, page two. On item three C, which talks about home base occupations. Um, it says, on the second sentence, a base operation may be placed in accessory building only in the following zones, districts. And we can remove that area where it says waiver signed by the applicant's attorney and put, if applicable, approved by the director of the building and license department. So there's revision there. If you go to page three, on number, uh, C, when parentheses, where it says granted null application, a strike through the first sentence, and it said, just says approval is conditional upon applicant's compliance with applicable local, state, or federal laws. And then the last major one is found, um, and that's something that Mr. Brown shared with you guys in terms of enforcement, and that is on page eight, where it talks about, um, um, violations. Really, the magistrate court of the, of Liberty County should have jurisdictional violations of the ordinance. So that's, that was some language we pulled from the, um, zoning norms and pulled it over there. Y'all don't have that copy. I have, I have that, uh, revision there. So those are some major areas. And it has been sent to the, to the county attorney for, um, review and put in legalese.
Mr. Mosley.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
I thought I saw something. I was going to ask a question. A push, what was it, a push cart?
Yes, sir, that's the little cart. You see them pushing sometimes?
In New York?
Full, yes, sir.
Anybody seen one over in Liberty County?
We may have.
Has some shopping cars they pushing.
Yes, they do.
That's the one they sell like lemonade and...
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And this is, this is for unincorporate Liberty County.
Stuff at Six Flags or whatever.
I think over all, you've done a great job and they're very, uh, popular.
They're very popular.
The health department said they inspect them twice a year. Would you be mentioning on this, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion we approve, uh...
Well, the, the county attorney still hadn't finished review. I don't believe you. You know what you said.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that had, uh...
He had done.
No, sir. No, sir.
Needs approval. Okay.
You don't have the last risk there, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So you're going to bring it back when, sir?
Uh, soon as he, give us... Yes, sir.
All right. Ministry of Report?
I'm going to be real quick, sir. I think I gave you copies of it. The fir, the first page is just an outline of those projects and what they are. Um...
I don't see no wavy flags or arrows.
No, ma'am.
There, there is. Yeah.
There it is.
There it is.
You won't see it all the way through there. Just, uh, real quickly, the, uh, Sam Harris Gym, this is an aerial taken today out there. They're, they're pouring the outside, uh, concrete for that in the parking lot. Work continues on the inside. Um, I really think we've got some air conditioner delays on HVAC systems, so I really think that that probably, uh, finishes up hopefully sometime in September to do that. Now, that's another project, though, that when you're doing your budget, you know, you're going to have to figure out staffing for that, but, uh, so that, that's coming along very well. Uh, I did want to show you this. Uh, this is the walking track. It's, they were pouring one last section of that. There were two people walking on it today. Uh, it's a pretty project down there next to the gym, so, uh, you can be very proud of that to do. Uh, y'all go by the Miller Park Station down there, so these are our pictures from today down there too. There are a little more work to do on the siding, um, but that project is pretty much on, on track as long as we can keep the ground dry, which is a challenge after tonight. Um, it makes that site work very difficult, but the site work contractor has already kind of started working there. Uh, probably in that project, your October, November timeframe for that. EMS Station Two, they were putting to final vinyl, vinyl siding on that this afternoon. I really think that that move into that station is probably going to happen no later than the middle of July. But probably before then, um, and you see just an inside shot there. Uh, this is that Public Works Building. Just to let you know, that is on the street being advertised to do that. And so, uh, everything should fall into place that you'll be able to get those folks out of the old EMS office into the new office before you consider award of that project, uh, whatever you're going to do with that.
That's the, uh, the maintenance base over there in the gray to the right?
Those, those are, mm-hmm. Those are vehicle maintenance base, mm-hmm. This is the same floor plan that y'all saw when Rusty was here. Just in, in color form. That, the EMS offices, y'all authorized those to go to construction drawings, so again, that's that same shot you saw, just prettied up color for PTP next week. Um, and that is, um, um, they're under construction drawings now. Once we have those drawings, we'll bring them back to y'all. So you get a chance to look at them, comment on them before you ever, you, you'll have to authorize that to go out to bid. So that won't be a problem at all.
Where is that one?
This is over there. If you remember, it's in that, um, best way to tell you is in that, in that vacant lot, just behind Kroger. Right in there, on South Main, mm-hmm. Long, thin lot, it's right there. Uh, and this is just a rendition, uh, of something, a sketch has been drawn to increase what we got to do or what you got to do for the, um, nine-one-one stuff. Most specifically is it maintains to the battery server area because those batteries are out of life this year. The new batteries won't fit in the current facility, so that's got to be expanded. But this is, this is just, again, a first shot at it. Um, but this is the expanded EMA area for the briefing areas and the conference rooms, uh, restrooms up here, and basically that's it. But that's authorized in your splosh seven. Um, both, all of these are authorized in your splosh seven, as a matter of fact. Uh, I do want to talk to you just a second tonight about the bypass project, let you know where, where you are with that. Uh, this is the status of all of that. Uh, you see the construction costs and the right-of-way utilities and the mitigation, uh, cost. All of those things, the right-of-way is complete. The environmental is wa, waiting federal highway administration approval. Utilities have been satisfied, have been satisfied, certified, and the engineering is complete. It's really due for a project let date of July. Couple of problems. Uh, you, as a local sponsor, are responsible for buying the wetland credits, which is where the asterisks are, and the utilities. Those total a little over three million dollars. So, right now, there's no funding for that. If the project can't be funded, if the three million dollars can't be found to put towards a project, then a project's going to be shelved by GDOT out there, and, um, and then they will wait until the Board of Commissioners has funding for it or some funding is found on the state level. There's a couple of issues with that. It, of course, it makes the timetable uncertain. Your permitting, this has been done for the environmental, expires if the project doesn't commence within three years. So if it sits there shelved for a period of time that that permitting expires, you're going to have to pay the cost again to do the environmental update, to do that. Um, and the wetland certifications, uh, might expire also, and of course, the cost is going to go up. Um, I'm sorry, the options that you've got for the board to consider. Um, I will tell you this, is that we, we have met, um, I put in an earmark request. I think we talked about this last time, uh, with the congressional folks. You would not know about that until after February, so the project would get shelved. Maybe then could be brought off the shelf, except that those federal funds wouldn't come into GDOT until the next year in twenty-five. So I'm not sure how GDOT would handle that. For the three million dollars, you know, there are some T-splosh projects you could look at if the board wanted to that you could delay until the next T-splosh. You're halfway in to this T-splosh, you're going to vote again on T-splosh next year because it'll come in in twenty-five. So you could take a look at some of those T-splosh projects, or you could go ahead and, and, um, and borrow money, borrow the bonds for it that would be paid back, uh, through a combination of your current T-splosh or the next T-splosh to do that. Uh, actually, you could defer those bonds and not make them payable, except for the interest, until the new T-splosh comes in. It would cost you, I think the number was right around two hundred thousand dollars. But that's where that project is, and the board needs to make a decision on, on, on possible funding of that project. Uh, because we have to notify GDOT. I need to notify GDOT really in the next sixty days. It's, it's come down to that point, so...
What's that, what's that amount that we...
That amount is three point two million dollars for both of those.
And all we've spent so far is how much?
Uh, you've spent engineering cost of probably close to two million dollars on a project over the last ten years.
Ten years, but it's been going on.
About ten years. We started paying about ten years ago.
ARPA, can we use ARPA?
Nah.
No?
Not for road construction.
Wonder could we get some, um, if we consider T-splosh, could we get some participation from our other collaborative partners to...
Well, you know, we met with the city. They didn't have any, they're, they have, anything they've got in the T-splosh, they said is committed.
Is committed, yeah.
We weren't asking about their individual monies. We were actually looking at that list at the top where we had those main projects, which is where the big money is.
Yeah.
And, but then, I think you, you were probably there, Ms. Chairman, but they didn't, they didn't indicate there was any money to give up on T-splosh.
So either it gets delayed, um, waiting on federal earmarks, uh, we use T-splosh or we borrow money?
Yeah, I think if, if, if to keep it from being shelved, the commission would either need to use some T-splosh and splosh funds or borrow the funds to be able to come up with the money you need. It's really your only options.
Yeah.
Right?
If you'll be so kind to send out our, our T-splosh list to us again, let's look at it.
Okay. Yeah, and I think Samantha, actually, what you need to be looking at, uh, if you want to... Is just look at the balances and that, and I, and I might get down, we've had a long night, but I, um, in, in your, in your T-splosh stuff, uh, in your book, focus on, well, you got your individual monies. I mean, I'm not suggesting that at all, but, um, but you've got mandatory projects that are at the top that are there.
They're there.
Some of those you can't get away from, and a lot of those are in the city. The intersection improvement projects are all in the city. So you're really talking about median and sidewalk, bacon and Louis Frazier, signal and median Butler Avenue, sidewalks, fifteenth street, or interstate paper project.
You need to make...
What is the, uh, bridge over ninety-five? What project is that?
Hmm, there's nothing in there for the bridge over ninety-five. You know, the study that's being done is, um, that y'all authorized along with the construction. It doesn't relate to the bridge. So that's all I have, sir.
So give them to me again, median sidewalks, Bacon Town and Louis Frazier Road?
Yes, sir, they're here on this.
On that back page.
Mandatory projects in that T-splosh report.
All these about, some of these are city, not county.
Yes, sir, all, all those intersections are in the city.
Right.
Well, except, let me back up. One nineteen and Barrington Ferry, and of course, those are in conjunction with those roundabouts that you've already, I mean, that's, those are already underway. You've got Highway seventeen at Limerick, that's not in the city.
That's on three twenty-five.
But most of those others are in the city, yes, sir.
What?
Okay.
That it, sir?
Yes, sir.
Anything else but the good of the order?
Second motion adjourned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, show your hands. Adjourned.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.